Hello, everyone. Our Vice Mayor is en route. His flight got delayed, so hopefully we're going to give it a few minutes. Thank you for your patience. A gray 3x5 card. Actually, it's brighter than that. It's even better. Okay. Counsel set, Councilwoman? All right. Good evening and welcome to Millbury City Council of October 10, 2023. And for everyone who -- I'm sorry. Wrong notes. We've just adjourned from a special council meeting, and we are moving into the full meeting and call to order, city -- call to order, Millbury City Council. If we could do roll call, please.
Councilmember Pappin? Councilmember Cahillan?
Here.
Councilmember Fung?
Here.
Vice Mayor Goodman? Mayor Snyder?
Present.
Four members of City Council are present.
Thank you. And if everyone who can rise, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we move into ceremony and presentations, just a couple of comments. This week, our hearts are broken by the unprecedented massacre of Israeli citizens. As this conflict unfolds, we know there will be more casualties, including innocent civilians in Gaza and in Israel. We are here to support the many members of our community who have family and friends in the region. Please know that our thoughts and prayers are with all of you. With that ceremonial presentation, Chief Barron. Wherever you want to be.
I find a podium.
Yeah, we had to make that smaller, skinnier. The City of Millbury is very happy to celebrate in your retirement, whereas it is with great honor and appreciation that we acknowledge the extraordinary dedication and selfless -- can I start over? The City of Millbury, whereas Fire Chief Barron retired from the Central County Fire Department in October 2023 after 32 years of service, and whereas Barron started his fire service career in 1991 and was one of the first paramedics within the Burlingame Fire Department in 1994, and whereas Barron has served Central County Fire Department since its early inception, serving the cities of Burlingame, Hillsborough, and Millbury, and whereas Barron has gone up through the ranks of Central County Fire Department in various roles throughout the years as Fire Captain in 2002, Battalion Chief Training Division in 2013, and Fire Chief in 2019, and whereas Barron is also a State of California instructor in low-angle rope rescue and FF? Firefighter survival? Survival. In 2001, he was deployed to the New York World Trade Center for Search and Rescue Operations. And whereas Barron's achievements are numerous and effective in promoting public safety of the communities, he served through education, prevention, and emergency response. And whereas Barron provided exceptional leadership and outstanding service to the City of Millbury, now, therefore, we, the members of Millbury City Council, do hereby honor and commend Fire Chief Bruce Barron for 32 years of dedicated fire service and extend our best wishes to Bruce and your family as you embark on this new journey. And I can say, I have always felt so completely safe in your hands and in our firefighters' hands.
To the Millbury Council, thank you so much. You've been a supporter of the department and myself, and I really appreciate it. And for Millbury in general, it's such an exciting time. You just drive around and see all the building and construction going on, and I think Millbury is going to have a very bright future, and I look forward to seeing it succeed. I would like to thank a few people. Tom Williams, thank you very much. It was very nice to get to know you, and I appreciate all your support. And to Elaine, thank you for all your time and patience. It's been great. Thank you. And Eduardo, also you, yourself, thank you for your time and patience. Much appreciated. So again, thank you, Council. Really appreciate everything. It's been an honor to serve Millbury. And Mayor, if I may, also, I'd just like to commend the Chief on an outstanding career. It's been a pleasure working with you and your leadership. You know, as was mentioned, Chief Barron was at 9/11, and throughout his career, he's put his life on the line to save others. So congratulations on the retirement. It's been a pleasure. Your leadership has been outstanding, and thank you for the dedication, the great work to San Mateo County, City of Millbury, and the other cities that you've served. So thank you, Chief.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank, obviously, Chief, for 30 years, 32 years of great service. One more person I want to thank is Mrs. Chief, who allow us to have Barron for those 32 years, and we're glad to return him back to you, unharmed, in one piece, and continue to keep everybody safe and so that your girls can also enjoy the company of their father. So thank you so very much. We appreciate you, and we're a safer community because of you. Thank you so much, Chief.
Chief, congratulations, and thank you, as well as everybody has just said here. I don't think the community actually realizes the risks you and your service men and women serving the Fire Department take each and every day, because if you don't know, nobody realizes when things are happening here, the deployment to other areas of California within our own city. It really means a lot to us as a community to have you all here and under your leadership. Thank you so very, very much. Greatly appreciated, and I do hope you enjoy every minute with your family and in this retirement. So I wish you all the very best.
Thank you, Gina.
I will echo everyone's gratitude, and I know I'm newer on the council, and I really appreciated all the support that you provided as I was onboarding and learning about Central County Fire and the vast array of services that you offer us, and especially the services to Millbury. So thank you so much for your service and congratulations on your retirement.
Council, would you like to join us? For photos, would you like the family with us?
Sure.
And we will get photos too.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Agenda Item Number Two.
Mayor, I think Surt also has a --
Oh, I'm so sorry. You did tell me that. Surt? Chief, you don't get to leave yet. You get one more member, a chance of us to embarrass you.
Well, I've got a loud voice, anyway. I can cover it. Chief, on behalf of all our Surt team members, we want to offer you this little card here for you from our membership, and thank you very much for the years that you sponsored us, had trust in our program, and gave you, gave us all of us your support. And we had some interesting times together. Thank you very much.
I'll downhill from here, I think. The Surt programs are going to be successful, and the more time we invest in it.
That's right.
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you.
And thank you, Marge. Really appreciate it. And then thank you to the community of Millbury. Much appreciated.
Okay. Agenda Item Number Two, Agenda Overview and Staff Briefing, City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Turning your attention to the third bullet point under Item Two, a report out from September 26, 2023, closed session. There is no reportable action from that meeting. And then moving on, a lot of things happening in Millbury as we move from summertime into autumn. So if anybody is interested in submitting their applications for the Social Equity and Cultural Inclusion Committee, Environmental Justice Solutions is currently recruiting members. They're our consultant. They gave a very detailed presentation at the last meeting. So they are recruiting members with a deadline for applications, October 15. So that's coming up the end of this week. The committee will participate in workshops over the course of two years, and the committee members will also receive a stipend of $50 per meeting. So if anyone's interested in being considered for this committee, please visit the city's website. And if you have any questions or would like more information, you can contact EJ Solutions at inbox, so I-N-B-O-X, at ej.solutions. So again, inbox@ej.solutions, or their project manager, Colin, C-O-L-I-N, at ej.solutions. Colin@ej.solutions, if anyone's interested. All right, recap on our compost giveaway. Last Saturday, Millbury Environmental Programs hosted a compost giveaway. A big thank you to South San Francisco scavengers for donating over 40 cubic yards of compost. Compost improves soil, and we appreciate our residents for using it in their gardens and their landscaping. Also wanted to commend our Public Works Department, who assisted with our traffic control and the delivery of the compost. So we will host another compost giveaway in the spring, but all 40 cubic yards were given away, and again, thanks everyone for their participation. Also upcoming events, October 13, which is this Thursday, is Millbury Goes to the Movies. The movie will start at 6:30 PM, and it will be indoors at the Great Hall at the Recreation Center. Monsters, Inc. is the movie, and so anybody interested to participate, it's always fun times, especially, you know, we have outdoor but indoors. We have popcorn machine and everything going, so great time for everyone. Monsters, Inc., great movie, 6:30 PM, this Friday at the Rec Center. Also, Thursday, October 19, is our last Beats, Brews &amp; Vines, featuring a band that we had last year, a very popular Busta Grooves. So join the City of Millbury for our last concert of the year. This takes place at Broadway and Hillcrest, and it's just a great evening event concert series. Sunday, October 29, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, is the Millbury Rotary Kids Carnival. The city writes that off and is part of the sponsorship. So join the Millbury Rotary Club Kids Carnival, October 29, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Kids 10 and under are invited to attend. It's a free carnival. The famous Boswick the Clown will be there. Games, 4-H animals, hot dogs, cotton candy, and kids wear your Halloween costume to participate in the costume contest. So for more information, you can contact the City Clerk's Office, 650-588-5400. And again, this is at Millbury Rotary Park, which is on Ashton, just south of Millbury Avenue. And Mayor, that concludes a quick update of what's happening here in the great city of Millbury.
Thank you, City Manager. City Attorney.
I thought I should take this opportunity to report out about your closed session that you just had pursuant to a special meeting that started at 6:30. The council met to discuss labor negotiations, and no reportable action was taken.
Thank you, City Attorney. Ms. Pappin?
Could the City Manager please comment on the power outage at Meadows?
Yes, so the question was, can I comment on the power outage yesterday in the Meadows neighborhood? So yesterday, at approximately 9:00 in the morning, PG&E was doing work on a power pole. Don't know exactly what happened, but that power pole caught on fire. Unfortunately, PG&E did not notify CCFD. They did not notify the city of the situation. After a recap with PG&E, they said, well, they determined it was an emergency and did not have the obligation to contact us, which I don't, we're going to check into that a little bit more. They should have contacted us. But it wasn't until about 4:00 in the afternoon that it was actually brought to our attention. We mobilized our Public Works Department, then sent out a notification, but at the end of the day, the power was on right around 9:00 last night. So it was, it affected Branberry Lane and the neighborhood, basically from Meadows Park to Ridgewood Avenue, and as Ridgewood Avenue curves, it affected around 200 units. But that was a situation, power pole caught on fire with some of PG&E's work. They had a contractor out there, so I think some of the residents didn't know who exactly was doing the work, but it was a contract PG&E employee or a company that was doing the work on a power pole.
Thank you, City Manager. I would only point out, too, thank you to our Public Information Officer, Justine Bleeker, because sometime in that time period, the announcement went out on Nextdoor. And it's a good reminder for everyone watching to go to the new city website and make sure that you pick, you check the box to get city updated information, and that way, when these things happen and we push information out through our public information system, that you will get it directed to your home.
And then feel free to contact the city. I mean, it's unfortunate that we were not communicated with by PG&E, and it wasn't until, actually, I think Councilmember Pappin was receiving phone calls, brought it to our attention, and then that's when we, again, mobilized Public Works to see what was happening and then got the word out. But definitely deficiency on PG&E's side. We hope to correct that, and we've been in contact with them, and hopefully, hopefully we can see improvement there.
Thank you. And Councilwoman, thank you for being accessible.
Yes, and we're going to work on city staff's response, making that public sooner rather than later. We have just a little fine tuning to do on our front as well. Thank you.
All right. With that, moving on to Agenda Item Number Three. This is a mouthful. We are approving the minutes of, the special meeting minutes of May 12, 2023, action item, special meeting minutes of May 23, 2023, action item, regular meeting minutes of May 23, 2023, action item, special meeting minutes of June 13, 2023, action item, regular meeting minutes of June 13, 2023, action item, and special meeting minutes of June 27, 2023, action item. Council.
Move approval?
Thank you, Ms. Councilman Fung?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cahillan. Any discussion? City Clerk, could you call the vote?
Councilmember Pappin? Councilmember Cahillan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The six sets of meeting minutes passed by a vote of 4 to 0.
Thank you. Next Agenda Item, oral report from City Committee and Commissioner Chairs. There are none tonight. Moving on to public communication. This is the part of our agenda reserved for persons wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. We will be calling in-person speakers first and virtual speakers after. If you are there virtually and have language assistance, it's always best if you can let the city clerk know ahead of time so they can pull that language up, but the instructions on using Wordify are on the front of every council agenda at that point. So first up, we have Byron, Brian Shields.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Brian Shields. I'm a field rep with Carpenter's Local 217, covering San Mateo County, but our office is located in Foster City. Wanted to come here tonight to talk about labor standards and what they do for the community. Labor standards include healthcare, apprenticeship, prevailing wage, and local hire, right? So giving that access to a person who lives here in Millbury or a person that lives here in San Mateo County, to give them an opportunity to go to work that they may not be going to college, they might not have found success after college, and they might need something, a industry to fall into, and that industry can be construction, certainly, men, women. This Friday in Morgan Hill, we actually have a women in construction event where we bring women down to the, to our apprenticeship, show them what it is that we do, and we have contractors there as well that will interview them, talk to them right there on the spot, and all of the above. I can send you guys a flyer. I'll send it to the, I imagine there's a council and email or the city clerk, and would love to have somebody come, all of you come. And so apprenticeship is, it's a proven pathway to giving somebody a middle-class life, right? A blue-collar life. It is, it's been shown over and over again that if they're invested in the education of getting to a place where they're a journey person, then they will stick with that career. You know, when it's a non-union side, many times that individual is flopping from the nearest diner and being the cook there to a construction, to back and forth, and it gives them no stability and it gives their families no stability, you know? And also, if you are not making a prevailing wage or at least a livable wage, you're likely driving in from the valley. You're likely driving in from the valley, so you're basically abandoning your kids, right? You have no healthcare to offer them, and you're on the road three hours a day, minimum. Just driving in here is probably an hour and a half, and driving out here is probably two and a half hours. So especially with the construction that is in the foreseeable future, you know, I know that there's other cities that are looking at labor standards. Berkeley has adopted what they call the Hard Hat Ordinance, which is 50,000 square feet and above, and I'd love to connect with the city on this kind of a thing and see if Millbury is interested in having the conversation. So thank you.
Thank you. Amy Kelly Lauer, and after Amy is Ron Raquel.
Good evening, City Council and city staff. My name is Amy Kelly Lauer, and I'm a 13-year resident of Millbury. I would like to start by acknowledging that we are on the ancestral homeland of the Ramaitsush Aloni people, and I'm here with what feels like a simple request. The city has been very open to celebrating heritage of all people, month by month, and so my request And so my request is by next year, by the second Monday of October, we also proclaim the day Indigenous Peoples' Day. So this is not something everyone may have heard of, but this is something that is actually in seventeen states in the country and in two hundred cities, including Columbus, Ohio, there's been a conscious decision to move away from celebrating Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Across the city, countless cities, counties, and states proclaim. And so in addition to, so in our own county, if you go on the website, both Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day are listed. In certain agencies like San Mateo County Health, Education, Libraries, they just talk about Indigenous Peoples' Day. So the reason I bring this up is that the outcome, I believe, will be increased curiosity in our history, in the people who came first on these lands, who were here first, how they got here, how they lived, and what happened to them, and the resurgence and what culture still exists, the issues that plagued some of those communities and the vibrancy that still exists. So I think it's a win-win for all of us, and that's just what I'm here for, to ask for tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ron Raquel. And after Ron Raquel, Albert Yam.
Hi, good evening, City Council. Just an update, the last two days I've crossed Millbrae Avenue. Surprise, surprise, I've almost been railroaded again. I don't know what else to say. Eventually someone's going to run me over or someone else over. I know you are working on it, but this has been five years in working and I'm at a loss of words. What is it going to take, a fatality to act on this? I haven't heard anyone. I've emailed the city council and I've heard crickets in getting back to me. So I strongly urge you to reach out to me so we can discuss this. This is just not for pedestrians, but it's also for cars crossing in the north-southbound direction. When you have cars crossing, people are in such a rush to cross and eventually someone's going to get hit. Cars are going to collide. I've seen two accidents in the last couple of years, and eventually there's going to be a fatality. This is a very fixable solution, and I just don't understand why it's taking so long. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Raquel. Mr. Yam.
Today I would like to ask about the financial state of the city. The last I looked at, we had a net negative position for the last fiscal year published. With the impending La Quinta Inn, with the loss of El Rancho Inn, transient occupancy tax, and with the loss of local businesses from Lucky and Walgreens that is happening later this quarter, I'm concerned about the revenue being impacted by all these activities. The last I heard is that, you know, we are already under-resourced, underprivileged as a city in terms of revenue, and there are a lot of expenses we don't have the money to pay for. And I'm concerned about certain expenditure that is in the pipeline that we should really consider, what is the priority for us to function as a city, to keep the basic needs of the residents, existing residents, not just certain, you know, initiatives that sound great on the paper, but may not have a realistic immediate impact to everyone. Thank you for your consideration, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yam. I have no-
Mayor, I know we're not supposed to, it's not on the agenda, but I just, for the public benefit, the city's not operating at a deficit as of this last budget, so that is a statement that is incorrect. I know it's not on the agenda, but I want to, for the benefit of the public, make that comment.
Thank you. I have no further paper slips. City Clerk, do we have anyone on Zoom?
We have two speakers from Zoom. The first speaker is Grace X. Please accept the unmute and speak.
Yes. First, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Italian Heritage Month and a belated Columbus Day. During public comments for item ten on the September twelve council agenda, I attempted to state my reasons for requesting the council vote against sending Maurice Goodman to the League of Cities Summit in Atlanta at the taxpayers' expense. However, I was repeatedly interrupted and muted, and the last time I was muted, I was not given the opportunity to unmute myself. In her September twenty-second email to me, Elaine Tran falsely claimed that I failed to unmute myself. Adding insult to injury, Goodman was allowed to misuse his time for council comments at the end of the meeting to attack me. None of you interrupted him while he called me names, lied about me, and intentionally dis-misdirected the council in regards to why I was disappointed in him. Despite some of you reaching out to me and encouraging me to speak at the meeting, that time was meant for updates on the committees he sat on, not to defame me. And for Calhoun to use her time to show her unwavering support for Goodman was frankly sickening. She should not be on the council if she cannot uphold judgment when she does not know the facts. Then at the next council meeting on September twenty-sixth, during public comments, I again tried to state my reasons for believing that Goodman should not be sent to Atlanta, but was constantly interrupted and spoken over. When I asked for my time to reset, the city's attorney claimed to give me two more minutes, but that was false. I was cut off exactly at three minutes from when I had started. While discussing La Quinta Project on Nextdoor, someone posted comments that I felt were offensive enough to report. Thus, I clicked on the person's name and began the reporting process and noticed the person's bio. I was not trolling nor searching for a gotcha moment as Goodman claims. Moreover, seeing it did not piss me off despite Goodman's claims. Given some comments Goodman had made about other council members during his Zoom meeting, as well as some online posts he directed at me, including calling me passive aggressive and playing liar, et cetera, I asked if he approved of this person's bio that stated, "I'm honestly only on here to piss off the old, uneducated, white people on this app." Goodman responded with what I felt was a deeply racist statement that stated, "Are you that intimidated by my blackness that you will latch on to anything just to get a gotcha moment?" As I said before, if the shoe fits. Seems like her profile must have hit home. I am sure she will appreciate your confirmation that you got the message and are pissed off. I supported and donated Goodman's election campaign, one of only two campaigns I have donated to in the last ten years because I believed he had integrity despite not-
Ms. Arab, your time is up. City Clerk, do we have another hand raised?
The next speaker is Nancy Kane. Please accept the mute. Nancy Kane, please accept the mute and start speaking for your public comment.
Ms. Kane, we'll have another council meeting in two weeks. If we've somehow missed you, I'm sorry that we could not bring you here today. City Clerk, do we have any other hands raised?
Mayor, I do not see any other hands raised at this moment.
Thank you. With no other hands raised and, okay, with no other hands raised and no additional paper slips, closing public comments for items not on the agenda and bringing us to consent calendar. And before I read off the items, we have received requests to pull agenda item number eight and agenda item number nine. Are there any other agenda items, Council, you would want pulled? Okay. And that means that those of you who've given me speakers cards for those agenda items, we will have public comment on those. So for consent calendar, if we could, please, agenda item number five, approved by motion, the quarterly investment schedule for fourth quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, it's an action item. Agenda item number six, approved by motion, a request from the Millbrae Lions Clubs for the use of Millbrae Recreation Center's fitness room and Great Hall for the Monster Mash and Bash event on Saturday, October twenty eighth, twenty eighth. October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, from eleven to two PM, it's an action item. And agenda item number seven, approved by motion, a request from the Millbrae Cultural Committee for parking lot and street closures and fee waivers for the Lunar New Year Festival on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. This is an action item. And just, just for the record, the Millbrae Lions Monster Mash and Bash, I am the chair of that with my lion's hat, and it is a project with the Millbrae Leos Club. So just putting that out there. If, Council, any comments on agenda items five, six, and seven?
So move on five, six, and seven.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman and Councilwoman. No further discussion. City Clerk, could you call the vote?
Councilmember Pappen.
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
Consent items five, six, and seven passed by a vote of four to zero.
Okay, next up is agenda item number eight. This is an informational report for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, mayor and vice mayor rotation. This is informational, and for the public, that means it can be discussed, there'll be public comment, but there will be no vote on that. All right. Do we have a staff presentation?
So Mayor, no staff presentation. We did submit the staff report pursuant to the protocols, and so it's just a little bit of background that the annual office rotation for the mayor and vice mayor position is scheduled to take place at the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting. The rotation process is set forth in the adopted city council protocols. Those were originally adopted in ninety-eight and amended in two thousand and fifteen. And the protocols establish a process for the selection of mayor and vice mayor. And the rules are set forth are not all-inclusive, so there is discretion, and the appointment and rotation is at the pleasure of the city council ultimately. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. The staff report lays out three different alternatives that are available to the council. Or a fourth alternative, quite frankly, as I just mentioned, at your pleasure, you're free to do that. So we're here to answer any questions as you may desire.
Thank you. I have, I believe, eleven speaker cards for this, and, oh, it looks like, oh, okay, different agenda item. So I'm going to put this, set this at two minutes as opposed to three minutes tonight. And with that, first up Stephen Rinaldi. And after Stephen is Stella Lau. And after Stella is former Mayor Marge Colapietro.
Good evening, City Council, members of Millbrae. Real quick, wanted to discuss the rotation of the mayor. I know there's a lot of important business that's recently developed, especially around commerce. Millbrae's had an interesting summer, putting it lightly. We now have the TOT that we're going to be missing out in regards to La Quinta, which is very serious, over six hundred thousand annually. And there's also news about Lucky's and Walgreens, so can't really quantify what that is yet, but obviously it's going to have an impact. So with that being said, we need to be really fiscally responsible. And knowing that all this is coming down the pipeline, I would urge you folks to vote more sooner than later on that rotation of the mayor seat. And I would also like to suggest that we strongly consider Anders for the position. He's been on the city council for quite some time. I feel he's got a steady hand economically, and he does bring a lot of real estate development to the table, which I think would be helpful with a lot of the development that's going on in the city right now. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Rinaldi. Please, we'll have, no, everyone, please, don't make me have to pull the gavel out of the door. I really don't want to pull the gavel out. We appreciate that. I see the vice mayor is joining us. Vice mayor, please join us. And vice mayor, we're on a consent calendar number eight. Get some water, get some things. I'm glad you can make it, his flight was delayed. All right, Stella Lau. And after Stella, Marge Colapietro, and then Joe Chen. And we're in two minutes.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Our main focus here is to highlight that according to the protocol, it is a clear requirement that every council member gets the opportunity to serve as mayor within a four-years term. This means council member Fung should rightfully assume the role of mayor as initially outlined in the December two thousand twenty-two staff memo. This decision is consistent with the desire of the Millbrae community and upholds equality and fairness by ensuring that every council member has the chance to serve as mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lau. No, no. Marge Colapietro, and then Joe Chen.
The protocols approved on March fifteenth, twenty fifteen, are still in effect through, although some council members have deviated from them for selfish reasons. I was a victim of being deprived of a second mayoral term in my last year of council service just because another wanted to be a mayor for the third time. Ever since twenty fifteen, nine years has passed, there has been tension over mayor and vice mayor positions. Tonight you have an opportunity to accept the informational report on twenty twenty-two, four mayor and vice mayor rotation. We need each and all of you to backtrack, to get, to get back on track and restore in a fair manner what is set forth in the protocols. The community is depending on you to do what is right. Please don't get caught up with tit-for-tat antics and disrespect for the protocols. Please move the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colapietro. Mr. Chen, and then Judy Louis, and after Judy is Sissy Rileyx. Riley?
Good evening, Mayor Snyder and Councilmembers. My name is Joe Chen, living in Millbrae for more than twenty-four years. I'm here tonight to support Councilmember Anders Fung to be the next mayor in twenty twenty-four. Anders Fung was elected to the city council in December twenty twenty. Before that, he served in the Millbrae Planning Commission and chaired the commission for two years. Serving as a city council in the last few years, he worked hard for the benefit of the community and the city. Among many other efforts, he advocates for the seniors by helping self-help for elderly obtain additional funding. Recently, he supported the effort of Millbrae residents to oppose the purpose of La Quinta Inn. Councilmember Anders Fung truly deserved to be our next mayor. I strongly urge the city council to do the right thing, to follow the city's protocol to allow Councilmember Fung to be the next mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. No. Judy, and then Sissy. And then Freeman Peng.
My name is Judy. I live in Millbrae about sixteen years already. And today I'm here, I just want to represent my family and most, all of the senior citizens. We need a mayor who will serve the city of Millbrae by working to keep its public streets safe for our senior citizen and its public schools safe for our children as priority. In addition to safety as a priority, we also hope to provide the elderly with a present place to entertain in the government building such as Millbrae Recreation Center. The city council, Anders Fung, is the best candidate. We all support him to become the next mayor in Millbrae. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Louis. Sissy Riley. And then Freeman Peng, and then Marian Kong.
Hey, good evening. My name is Sissy. I live in Millbrae almost twenty-nine years. So I'm here- So I'm here today representing my family, my friends, and my client who bought a house in Milbury to support the councilmember Feng to be our next mayor, because he love Milbury, speak to Milbury, he protect Milbury. He representing our voice for the past few months for the La Quinta Inn, where always show he is qualified to be our next mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Freeman Peng, Marion Kong, Alice Kwong, and Helen Fu.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Milbury City Council and esteemed community members. My name is Freeman Peng. Tonight, I stand before you to advocate for a significant step towards achieving true social equity within our diverse and vibrant community. It is essential we consider the needs and representation of Asian Americans, a substantial portion of our population, and particularly our Chinese community. If we are truly committed to the ideals of social equity, we must recognize the unique challenges faced by Asian Americans, who have often been labeled as a model minority. This label doesn't always reflect the true, their true aspiration or needs. In reality, many Asian Americans are vulnerable because they are not accustomed to active participation in politics, and may hesitate to voice their concern even when they face differential treatment. As a community, it is our responsibility to ensure that every voice is heard and that every individual has the opportunity to contribute to build our city a better place. The city of Milbury can play a vital role in changing the status quo. One significant way to demonstrate our commitment to social equity is to provide Councilman Feng with the opportunity to serve as the mayor of Milbury. Councilman Feng is the only Asian American member on this council, and his turn to be mayor was taken away. This situation does not align with our understanding of social equity and fair representation. It is time to rectify this imbalance and provide Councilman Feng with the opportunity he rightfully deserve. By electing Councilman Feng as our mayor, we send a powerful message into the Asian American community that their voice-
Thank you, Mr. Peng.
Thank you.
Marion, and then Alice Kwong. And then Alice, I've also got you for agenda item 10.
Okay, uh, every, hi, at the Milbury council members, um, okay, um, I think beside talk about, a lot of people talk about how, what a capability that Anders has, but this is my view. Milbury council election has been always the at-large system. Starting in 2022, we had changed to district election. So in 2022, councilmember Angelina Cahana and Maurice Goodman were elected for District Two and District Four. Then we still have three councilmembers who are elected through the at-large election. The district election will continue in 2024, and for the District 1, 3, 5. And then, but then, we will elect three districts, uh, councilmen by the district, right? So, um, so that's what I'm asking is to do is, let's finish up the rotation for the at-large election. We have, we, today, we have three councilmen actually was elected at large system, um, and then that just finish up. And then also, Anders does deserve to be the mayor. Um, he worked hard, and then he's, he's served four years, he need one year to be the mayor. He deserve that, okay? So I'm, I'm hoping that, I'm recommending you all to adopt your scenario two on your staff report, and then, and then we complete our at-large, at-large rotations, and then after, you know, start next year, everybody will be elected to district, right? So then it will be equal, okay? Everybody can take turn. All right, and then also, the part of talk about, chat, Milbury is facing another challenge. La Quinta's, lots of TOT, potential business revenue loss from the large retail businesses. So I would urge you all to move this into the consent item for next council meeting to have a early, um, early consent result, and then to have a proper transition.
Thank you, Ms. Kong.
All right.
Okay, good evening, all councils and our labor. Uh, tonight, and of course, for number eight is, as a person resident here since 1998, I understand how Anders was what in the past few years, and also by rotation protocol, he should be a mayor for these years, no questions. And I hope all of our council understand that and realize and knowledge what have been asked to. And one thing very important, we are small city, we don't need politicians. We need people present our residents, and which, in the past few months, I will see our mayor and Gina and Anders really communicate with majority residents and initiate and present our voice. Also, not only our council table, also the letter, and also in our supervisor meeting, they all speak. We need someone like that. And the second is, um, Anders was ruled by the whole cities. I really like that, and it's not like a few hundred votes, few hundred votes, even here is more than that. So please, everyone, and it's not just a mayor, and in the next few years, it's very challenging for all our cities, balance of a financial, and bargaining with the county, and these people have our understanding, our citizens need, our, our cities need financial wise, economic wise, and growing, safety, as like seniors, children, school. If we lost our revenues, how can maintain our quality of school? Big questions. If we lost our revenues, how can balance sheet to maintain our safety, higher additional shift? And if we lost our revenue, how can provide more service to our seniors, including myself? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kwong. City Clerk, if you're going to put this with number 10s? And Helen Fu, that is the last of the paper copies I've got. If there's anybody else who has to comment, you could grab a slip and, oh. I've got it. Sorry, Ms. Fu.
It's okay. Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Helen, and I'm a long-term, longtime, um, resident, Milbury resident. I'm here tonight to support Anders Feng to become the mayor of Milbury in 2024. Not only that Anders Feng is the rightful councilman to become the mayor per protocol, but also that I witnessed firsthand Anders Feng's dedication over the years as a great leader. Anders Feng has a proven track record. He's always at the forefront of fighting alongside Milbury residents and represented our best interest. He's been the voice of Milbury residents and always operated with residents' best interests at heart. You can always find him at various community events and talk to people to get to know everyone, and Anders Feng should be the mayor for 2024 because he earned it and he deserved it. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Fu. Liang.
My name is Liang. I'm here today to strongly against the decision to hire EJ Solutions for the social equity initiative. I checkbox both, agenda, not agenda.
Can you stick, we already missed the opportunity for items not on the agenda. That's not on the agenda.
But I checkboxed it on the, on the paper, but my name wasn't being called. I have both boxed.
Oh, public comment, it does say public comment.
Can you restart my timer?
Can you just do, can you do agenda item eight?
I will keep it in two minutes.
Let me touch base. Let's start over with agenda item eight, and then-
No, that's not fair. I need Fu two minutes.
I'm sorry, I didn't see the PC up there.
Is it my fault that-
No, that was my fault.
So I think I deserve my Fu minutes.
If I may, real quick, so point of procedure, looking to the city attorney to open public comment or not?
Yeah, we, we could take her as a public comment if it was-
Do you want to do it right now or finish with agenda item? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you so much.
Then you've got two and two.
Thank you so much. Okay, I only need two. So I'm going to start all over again. I'm here today to strongly against the decision to hire EJ Solution for social equity initiative in Milbury. The funds of 200,000 is a substantial burden, especially given the recent losses caused by losing businesses such as Lucky's, La Quinta, and Walgreens. We must first pinpoint the specific social equity challenges Milbury faces today. It's essential to question the timing of this proposal and whether it's aligned with our immediate priorities. I believe we have other priorities such as fixing the road, adding stop signs, and also funding our Milbury education system. Do you know each family is expected to donate 1,100 per child per calendar year for each kid going to public school? Furthermore, we must evaluate the effectiveness of similar programs in other cities. Do they exist? And how successful have they been? We should not allocate our funds on something that might not work, like home key projects. Also, finally, I want to support Councilmember Feng to become the next mayor of Milbury. We should follow the protocol. One of the most important qualities as a mayor is to represent the cities, the residents of Milbury, not because of the personal objective. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ho. I have no other paper comments or paper slips for this. City Clerk, people on Zoom.
We have two speakers online. The first speaker is Grace X. Please accept the unmute.
Yes, um, I really don't care who's mayor, because everybody on the council is pretty much beholden to special interests and subject to disappointing all of us. For example, their five to zero vote to hire EJ Solutions. But what I would like to do is point you to the city bylaws, section seven dash 10, that states the behavior and conduct of a council member who intentionally does not follow proper, proper conduct may be subject to council actions such as reprimand, formal censures, loss of place in rotation, loss of committee assignments, or other actions as deemed appropriate. Thus, I don't like hearing this protocol fairness. I think the best person should always be elected mayor, irregardless of whether they were previously mayor or not. In particular, when a council member, for example, calls a constituent racist names and lies about such constituents at a public meeting, out of turn, and mutes and interrupts people, that, that council member has lost the trust and respect of the, of the constituents in Milbury, and cannot effectively represent the, the city given the statements, and really should be recalled, but given that's the small budget and expense of a recall, a lot of people don't want to recall somebody like that, but in no case should somebody like that ever become mayor. So I think we should get rid of the protocol and the rotation completely. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ning Hua, and Ning Hua, if you state your full name for the record.
Hi, Mayor Schneider and the council member. Can you hear me?
You're coming in great, sorry, Ning Hua.
Okay. Uh, my name is Ning Hua Chen. I live in Milbury for 24 years, and I, here today, I want to express my strong support for Councilmember Anders Feng to be our next mayor. He knows what Milbury needs and always involved in the community. He should have the opportunity to serve as the mayor in his four-year term. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Any other comments on Zoom?
There are no other hands raised, right?
Okay, no, um, I have no other paper slips closing, oh, a new comment?
Yes, uh, we have one new, we raised hand, and it is Ray Chen.
Okay. This is last one, then, last call.
Yeah, last call, um, Ray Chen, please accept the mute.
Ray Chen.
Good evening, council. This is Ray Chen. I'm, uh, I'm in favor of seeing Anders Feng as our mayor next year. So I, I would encourage the council to adopt what's referred to in the agenda as the second scenario. And Anders has served the city of Milbury in various capacities for many, many years, beginning within appointment to the planning commission in 2017, chairing the commission from 2019 to 2020, and as a council member since 2020. He deserves a shot at being mayor. I, I would also agree with former Mayor Marge Colapietro's earlier pleas to end the game playing and get the city back on track. We, we've all witnessed the disruption caused by breaks in the longstanding rotation protocol. Anne Schneider was denied the mayoral title not once, but twice, in 2017 and 2018. She understands well what it's like to be subjected to such capricious decisions. The council was again caught off guard last December by a surprise motion that forestalled Anders rightful ascension to vice mayor. So let, but let's return the city's advancement process to standard protocol, especially in light of the fact that 2024 represents the final opportunity for Anders to hold the position of mayor before his current term expires. I've, I've seen Anders actively engage with Milbury residents on a daily basis. I see him walking the gamba with downtown business owners. I see him meeting with residents individually and in groups at the library, at city hall. In, in many cases, he communicates with a large Chinese population in their own language. He's the first generation Asian American who grew up in the Hong Kong projects, made his way to the-
Thank you, Mr. Chen. Thank you. Okay, no further public comment, bringing it back to council. This is an information item. I, I will say that there were good comments made by all present on there. Counsel, do you have any comments? Vice Mayor?
First, I'd like, just like to say, um, I keep hearing, and obviously, I'm sure it's not the intent, but I keep hearing people say that Anders deserves this. This is not a token, um, position. This is something that Anders has earned, and I want to start there. Anders has earned this opportunity and this, um, this chance to serve as our mayor. And with that, I'll just make my statement. Over the past 10 months or so, I have witnessed an individual with the necessary and appropriate skill set to not just lead our city as a procedural rotation necessity, but on his merits and his experience. I not only believe that we as a council should not just adhere to the spirit of our past protocols, but we should ensure that any future rotation is protected from individual politics by approving protocols that will focus on the appointment of vice mayor solely with a guarantee of ascension to mayor, only to be blocked by a supermajority of four to one. This would provide a level of transparency, decorum, and expectation for all. I ask that we give direction to staff to provide council with the appropriate guidance and procedures to support scenario two, and give Anders and his family opportunity to serve as mayor of the city of Milbury.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That was lovely. Other comments from council? Staff, um, do you need direction from council to look at scenario two?
Yeah, I think a point of clarification, I think the vice mayor's comments about the direction, it would be appreciative if that's in a motion.
But this is an informational item.
No, I said direction. I said direction. I said give direction, I didn't say emotion. But if we give direction, we do need a majority of the body to give that direction. Perhaps we agendize it, or if it's okay with the city attorney concurrence, and then, and then we'll obviously pursue that.
I, I see you, councilman. Okay, so just to make sure the public knows, on an informational item, we cannot vote on that. Councilwoman Pappin?
Yes, this is completely informational, we shouldn't be taking any direction here. It was just informational, um, for the public to hear what the protocols are and just what the staff has listed under the current protocols. So it's not directing council to do anything, this is informational.
But in order for us to act, we do want to make sure we adhere to what the community has said tonight and what we believe to be correct, and so giving, let me finish, and we give direct- And we give direction and not act. We're not acting. We can continue this matter.
If it wasn't you, I was trying to get Gina's attention. Sorry, Vice Mayor. No, I apologize for interrupting. City Attorney, this is an informational, but we can direct staff to bring this to a next council meeting.
Yes, you can. And I was just going to suggest that. That would be the cleanest way. And we could even designate it as action on your next agenda.
Okay. Councilwoman.
Yeah, I'm a little unclear here because we've discussed multiple times protocols and various modifications and all of that. So again, I'm unclear as to what we're directing the staff to do. The report has many aspects of the protocols listed here. If they're going to be changed, we have discussed updating them. We've discussed a whole bunch of different ways to approach this. So, you know, I don't think it's appropriate just to go down one path here if we want to really examine all the protocols, and that's what we should do because that's what's been brought up several times in the past.
And I very much appreciate that, Councilwoman Pappan. I did have updating all of our protocols on our council goals, but it did not get the votes. So I think at this point, and I haven't had this side of the podium if they have anything to say, I would, anything otherwise, I would say, staff, can you bring this back at our October 24th council meeting as an action? Because as Speaker Chen said, not knowing what's going to happen in December makes your November and December incredibly stressful. And it would be lovely for our next mayor to know what's going to happen. They can invite who they want to swear themselves in, and they can bring friends and family for that occasion. So I would love to get this done and not have it a guessing game every December. Councilwoman Cahalan.
I just want a clarification. In Councilmember Goodman's comments, I heard maybe two things, so correct me if I'm wrong. One was comments around this year's rotation and then direction moving forward for a more formalized process new with districts. So I think of that as two different things. Are we directing to bring that back to council as two separate items?
At this point, the way I took it is simply to work on the mayoral and vice mayoral rotation. Let's come back and deal with how we're going to do it. Again, I brought that up at goal setting, and it didn't get the points on that, but it will be coming to us, Councilwoman Cahalan. It's an excellent point that we need to clarify that, especially in lieu of districts.
So we're discussing bringing the rotation--
Just the rotation.
Or bringing the vote early.
I'm sorry?
So we're discussing bringing the vote early.
Bringing it back as an action item so that it could be voted upon so that December comes in.
I think a point of clarification, one is the selection of mayor and vice mayor, I think is what the council member is asking.
Okay.
Let's see, the other action would be what the vice mayor had suggested tonight to formalize that, but to bring back that, bring that item back as an action item to direct staff.
And then that would provide the direction and, I guess, projecting to our council as well as a community who our next mayor will be following that vote. Is that understood?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll have the two items then for action on the next agenda.
Right. But not the action to vote for mayor, just the action to how-- the process.
Yeah.
Because we can't do the rotation prematurely.
Reorganization occurs the first--
Correct.
--meeting in December. But I think perhaps some direction on clarification going forward on the protocol.
Correct. And just formalizing, taking the should and must out of it. When you say an individual should serve as mayor in their first term, that's not a must, and then maybe just changing that to a must serve. And then only way to change that would be that super majority of four one. But I'm giving staff direction with council to be able to sharpen that up.
Okay. Councilwoman Pappan, Councilwoman Cahalan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, protocols as was identified here is just that a protocol, as the new council members disregarded completely in the last rotation here. So, I mean, I think what's being proposed here is a complete rewrite of what the staff report has suggested here. Protocol is a protocol. And as several council members just threw everyone out the window, I don't quite understand which direction we're going in here. The vice mayor has suggested a specific vote for how this progresses. This, again, is informational. Some cities actually don't bring it up for a vote. Sometimes it's just automatic. So, I mean, there are so many different avenues here, and I think we are obligated to take a vote in December. So you're changing various protocols. It's getting a little confusing here. The vice mayor is suggesting something, but we haven't all agreed to that either. So I don't like just directing staff to do one thing when I think there has to be consensus from the entire council. And this is not, we can't take a vote on something that's an informational item.
So my understanding of the direction is bring back an action item that the council can discuss if a majority of the council wants us to proceed with amendments to the protocols and then direction of what those protocols will look like and read. That's what we'll bring back. That's the action.
Right.
You can't take, you can't take a vote tonight because it's an informational item, as I misstated. Give us a motion and a vote for that direction. That's what we'll bring back for action, not the decision on whose mayor and vice mayor change that.
Well, again, I think there should be options.
Direction on changing the protocols and tightening them up is--
Yeah. If you're bringing this forward, there should be options.
Councilman Cahalan, but I think the vice mayor wanted to speak to that. Is that okay if the vice mayor goes first? Thank you.
No, I just, I mean, I think it's, the consensus is there that the majority of the council, we haven't voted, but we believe that there was, there's an opportunity to correct something that was done and provide someone that has earned the right to be mayor to be mayor, and that's what we're trying to do. It has been done, what's been done in the last year, and this rotation has been done numerous terms under your watch as a councilperson and prior to that, which was already spoken to. We're trying to fix that. We're trying to make sure that that is not an option for any council in the future to make sure that no one is wronged in the way that has been in the past. And so what we want to do is try to do that. We're giving direction to staff and council to be able to provide something to us by our next meeting to make sure that doesn't happen again.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman Cahalan, and then Councilman Feng.
I think just as we look at an agenda item to update rotation protocols, I know you mentioned removing the must and the should. That probably is more about whether it's a protocol or an ordinance, and if that's something we discuss or vote on when it comes back to council. And then maybe have a few options of what the rotation could look like, especially accounting for districts moving forward after the next election.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cahalan. I think actually the staff report pretty clearly gave some very clear options. Had this been made an action item, we could have done it. But if we could just, we've got other really big items--
No, definitely. I just want to say one thing. I think we're getting really confused between this year's vote and options and setting a future protocol. So I think, I think we're kind of talking intertwined of the two, and we need to clearly separate the two.
And that's always an option. But the reality is, it's been a year, and we've done nothing.
Right.
So we have to do something, and that starts with staff, giving us, giving staff direction to bring us something to vote on to make sure we begin that process. If that process takes a year, two years, at least this council began to make sure that what happened last year and years prior doesn't happen again.
Agreed. Councilman Feng, since we've been talking all over you.
First of all, I just wanted to say I'm incredibly grateful for all the comments Without words, I'm incredibly grateful, including the vice mayor's comment as well. Thank you so very much for your recognition. I'm extremely, just without words at the moment. So I'm extremely thankful for all your support. In terms of the business itself, I think it is important that we have some sort of decision early on as quickly as possible here. If that's to be the next council meeting, I would support that, just to take the anxiety out of the community. Every year, we come to this rotation discussion, and there's a lot of anxiety. And also, moving forward for the next year, we can start planning things ahead in terms of the priorities and the agenda. We have a lot to do next year. So I think there is definitely a value to bring this back in the next council meeting to make the decision for the rotation in the upcoming year. That's the first point I wanted to address. Second, I heard also loud and clear that there needs to be a discussion on future protocol so that the line of succession is clear for the community, for the city moving forward. So this does not come back as an awkward discussion every year. We wanted to make sure that this is as clear as possible to every single one of our residents so that we can focus on important things, important businesses that we need to do. I mean, Millbury has been standing up for ourselves in the last few years, doing really well at it, thanks to the leadership in this council as well as city manager and all our staff. So I think bringing back the rotation protocol as a discussion point and to further make a decision at some point sooner rather than later so that we have a definitive date as to when the update of that protocol, taking into the account of being a district in the future, would be extremely valuable. Now, whether it is, could it be the next meeting or early next year? We could, we need to figure that out. But what I will say is that there is a lot of values to update a protocol, to reflect district, and so that the line of succession is as clear as it possibly be. And I hope that everybody can agree on this.
Thank you, Councilman Feng. So the direction that I'm hearing is come back on our, what is the November date? I can't do it in my head. But I do hear two different things.
Next meeting, October--
Oh, second meeting in October.
Okay. Second meeting in October, the 24th.
October 24th.
October 24th. What I am hearing are two different things, and this would be my, if I could get three votes or three straw polls, I know we can't vote, that we handle the mayoral, vice mayor rotation as a separate item of the future protocol. So let's just do one and handle it and let everybody go forward, and we have a lovely holiday season together, all of us together. And then let's bring the protocol back as quickly as we can. But there are other items within the protocol and some changes in state law that would have to be addressed at the same, or could be addressed at the same time. So do that as a separate agenda item. Would you be okay with that? Okay, so I'm seeing shaking of heads. With that, I'd love to, if staff understands the direction--
We're not sure.
Yeah, Mayor.
Say that again.
I mean, so just to help, we're prepared to bring back, you know, what the vice mayor was speaking to at the next meeting because that action is not us bringing back recommendations for, it's just to get the formal direction of the council to go work on it. I don't know if there's three votes or not to do that. And then, and then part of that action will be, here's what we would like to see in that. So as a discussion that I heard this evening is amend the protocols for the selection is only for vice mayor.
For the future.
Not presumptive here, but then if the vice mayor is the decision point, then that vice mayor then automatically becomes mayor without question unless there's a fourth--
Okay, I see how you have to do the two.
So, you know, that's one council member's direction, but I don't know, and because you can't take action this evening. So I think we bring it back for that, and then we have that discussion in action. Yes, staff, go back and write this up, and we're prepared to do that at the next meeting for sure.
For the public, the reason why it seems like it's a little bit semantics here, years ago, Millbury and many other cities would send out invitations, and it would say the reorganization, mayor so and, upcoming mayor so and so, vice mayor so and so. It would be lovely to get back to that where there's a consistent, constant flow for that. So if that's our goal, is that, let's go forth on that.
And that was the second direction that we could bring back for an action item as it was discussed this evening, sooner rather than later, for assurances that there are no surprises in December so people can plan accordingly and appropriately. That's the information. That would be an action--
I'm seeing shaking heads. So we're okay then? We're straight? And we will see that in two weeks?
Those are the two things. We're clear. We're prepared. We can bring that back in two weeks.
Okay, great. If there's no further council comments, I am going to close Agenda Item Number Eight. I thank you all. I thank you, Vice Mayor, very gracious on that. Thank you, Councilman Feng, and Councilwoman Pappan and Cahalan. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Bayside Manor Park and Marina Park Upgrades Project, updating regarding playground equipment. This is an action item, and we have our Public Works Director San Batista, or city manager. I'm sorry.
Well, no, Mayor, thank you. We'd like to introduce Mr. San Batista, Director of Engineering and Public Works, for presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. Tonight, I have the pleasure of giving you an update on the Bayside Manor Marina Vista Park Improvement Project. So could you, there you go. Thank you. And Eduardo, can I go ahead and control it from here? Okay. All right, so tonight, I'm giving you an update regarding the playground equipment. So next slide, please. So as you know, in March of, March and May of 2023, staff conducted several community engagement feedback events such as pop-ups at the park, public announcements, community online surveys to focus on the site design. Eduardo, it's all, it's all getting jumbled. So, and then, of course, we had an open house at the recreation center, and we also had a public meeting presentation at the Parks and Recreation Commission. Next slide, please. So in June of this year, Gates and Associates showcased the preferred conceptual designs of city council. And at city council's request, the purpose of this update is to provide the council and the public a preview of the new playground equipment for each park. On September 13, 2023, a special Parks and Recreation Commission meeting was held, and renderings of the new playground equipment for both parks were shown. During the community survey that were conducted, the public wanted shade, so you will see in the renderings that shade is integrated within the playground equipment. Next slide, please. The Millbury Parks and Recreation Commission made a motion to recommend the design for the playgrounds as presented with the caveat to look at options for an ADA swing and options within budget for brighter colors. The cost of the structures for both parks is a total of $300,000. The city has received a grant in an amount of $300,000 from the state of California to fund and purchase the playground equipment, and a big check presentation is scheduled for this next Wednesday, October 18th. So we hope that you'll be there to accept this big check. So tonight, staff recommends that the city council approve the Park and Recreation Commission's recommendation and provide any direction. So with that, let's, next slide. So we'll look at the renderings for Bayside Manor Park. Next slide, please. So this picture shows you the existing condition of Bayside Manor Park, and as you can tell, it's in okay condition, but we want something new. So let's show the next slide. So this is the rendering of the new playground equipment. As you can see, there is shade integrated within the playground equipment. Next slide, please. And as we go in the next slides, we're just-- And as we go in the next slides, we're just, I'm just showing the, the different views of the playground equipment. So as, as you can see, there's safety surfacing, there's platforms, rope walls, nature place stumps and rocks, ladders, jungle climbers, freedom swings, and the nucleus intensity climber in the middle, they'll keep our, our residents' children busy. So next slide, please. And, and in this, in this slide, you can see that there's also an educational component to these playground equipment. So, next slide.
Actually, Sam, I know this is near and dear to the mayor's heart, but can you go back one slide?
Sure.
And point out the life of a oak tree, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I saw the life of the oak tree, I very much appreciate that.
Okay, great.
Pretty neat.
Yeah, so we intend to have some educational pieces in the playground equipment. Next slide, please. And here is the rendering for, for Marina Vista. And next slide. So as you see here, this is the existing condition of the park. However, to the next slide, we are putting in safety surfacing to make it colorful, shade. Once again, platforms, something called the Shasta climber, monkey bars, traction stairs and climbers and barriers. You know, it's a complete upgrade to the park. And, you know, we are still in design, hopefully we'll be finished with the design by the end of the year, going out to bid in January with an award in February or March, and then construction in April. So we're looking forward to getting these parks renovated for our residents in Bayside Manor and Marina Vista. So that concludes my, my presentation, and if I can answer any of your questions.
I appreciate us taking the time to pull this from consent. As you've shown, we've had a very community-involved process, and I wanted to ensure that this stage allowed the opportunity for the community to, to see this at our council meeting and provide input if they like. I get to be the represent, council representative with Park and Rec Commission, so I did get to see a sneak peek of this, but I'm not allowed to talk there. So it was very hard. I just really want to thank Gates. I had tears of joy when I saw this, just to see what the parks are now, what my kids played in when they were little, and what children now are going to have in the park in the next year is very exciting. A couple of comments that I had, one, I was curious if the ground material is recycled material?
Usually the safety surfacing, they use recycled materials, so there is recycled content in that.
And then another thing that stood out to me is I really like the natural elements, the trees and the rocks in the Bayside Manor, and I don't know if there's space or room for that in the Marina Vista Park as well. And then, looking at my notes, I just, it stood out to me in the presentation that the wonderful check that we're receiving from the state level specifically for the playground equipment. But I know so much of the playground equipment is larger and more significant than what we had before, which is something that allows us for community impact fees. Is, I, I mean, is that checks have to go to the playground equipment? Can it go to other part of the parks so that we can capitalize on the community impact fees?
So I, so the, the check of the grant from the state is for the park equipment?
Okay.
For both the parks?
Okay. Let me just double check. And then another thing that came up at the Park and Rec Commission meeting, and, you know, this isn't, isn't specific to this vote today, but just being mindful and thinking about wear and tear levels and planning ahead and getting those on city calendars so that all the work that we're putting into the parks doesn't, you know, fall behind like we see with the parks today, so.
Right, and we intend to inspect these parks on a regular basis.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Pappan.
Thank you to the staff and also the community. This has been two years plus.
Can you get them?
Thank you to the staff and the residents, because this has been an ongoing effort by the city, prior city council, just to be clear here, because there's been some discussion that there may not have been consideration for the city in its entirety, and there always is and should be for the city council. We are very grateful to the state, our assembly member and senator, for helping us in this effort sooner rather than later. We look forward to the entire community enjoying this park and our other parks as well. It's a wonderful way to bring the community together here. One quick question, though, as far as water permeability, bioswells or anything like that happening in this area?
Sure. So in terms of stormwater, stormwater pollution prevention, we are, it's part of, of this project is to design features like that. So if we can put in a bioswale, we will. It's just having to make sure that things are permeable, you know, making sure that we have fall and make sure that we grade it correctly. So we'll be looking at that during design.
And then I forget the lighting, though, to protect the parks. Are they going to have specific hours of operation to avoid vandalism? No golfing signs up? Evidently someone over there has a real affinity for hitting golf balls into the canal. So is that under consideration?
Right, so, you know, we, we do have hours for lighting, so we'll be looking at, you know, what, what hours are appropriate and ensure that we're consistent with our other parks.
Great, thank you. Very exciting.
Let me just add on to that in terms of lighting. There's been a lot of new science coming out with lighting and all of the streetlights that were supposed to go with that one type of blue light, which is very bad for bats. So let's make sure, given that that's right next to, both are right next to wildland areas, that we get the right lighting that won't interfere with, I know this sounds silly, but bats can eat 500 bad insects a night. So bats are our friend, and there, almost every species is approaching endangered species category. So we need to make sure we get the right kind of light. Thank you. And I cut in with other council comments? Okay? It's going to be exciting, can't wait.
So I am, what we need from the council is an approval.
Move approval.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pappan. Thank you, Vice Mayor Goodman. Any further discussion? City Clerk, could you call the vote?
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahalan?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Consent Item Number Nine passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you.
Did I, did I forget public comment? Oh, there was no public comment, I did check. Okay, thank you. Okay. Chloe, that's the end of Consent Calendar, calendar public hearing, there is no public hearing tonight. Moving on to existing business, there is no existing business. Moving on to new business, Agenda Item Number 10, and I do have speaker slips for people from Agenda Item Number 10. This is Discussion and Direction Regarding a Draft Memorandum of Understanding between San Mateo County and the City of Millbrae Regarding the County's Acquisition and Management of La Quinta Inn and Suites for Permanent Supportive Housing, and this is an action item.
So Mayor, as we get started here, I'd like to bring to your attention a memo that I had submitted to the City Council yesterday. We have hard copies. And basically, this is just a, an easier version for the City Council to follow of the MOU draft that was submitted by the county manager to the city with our strikeout and underlying version. So this is an easier, rather than the two attachments, it's a little bit cumbersome in the staff report, so this is, you know, refer to this. And then this, obviously, as, as our Community Development Director will present, there were some things that, in the draft MOU that we had received from the county staff, that did not follow the motion of the Board of Supervisors, and so that's, those are the changes that you will hear this evening that we're recommending. And so this is the document that you can easily follow rather than the attachments in the staff report. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Andy Mogason, our Community Development Director, for a staff presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, members of the public here this evening. So this, that's, thank, I appreciate the introduction, City Manager. Next slide, please, I'll dive right into it. So just to give you the background, the County Board of Supervisors approved the acquisition of the La Quinta Inn and Suites at their meeting on Tuesday, September 12th. In their motion, they directed the preparation of a memorandum of understanding to be entered into with the city to address, among other things, the city's loss of TOT revenue, public safety, services, landscaping, aesthetics, and management of the property. Aspects of the board's motion, as the city manager stated, that are not specified in the MOU are recommended for correction and identification in the city's response to the county. I'm going to be going over those tonight, point by point. And the MOU does not address the renovation of the hotel from 99 to 75 units, nor does it specify the allocation of units for the 45 families and 35 seniors. Next slide, please. So to give you an idea of the difference between the city's recommendation and what the county has proposed in their initial draft language, I've got a quote on the screen here. The term, the first section of, of the MOU that we're concerned about, we really need to, to make sure that the county follows through on their obligations. So we have some very firm language that we recommend for revision to the terms to ensure the payment of transient occupancy taxes regardless of the county receiving home key funding. As you may recall, the county said that they could fund this project with or without home key funding. And as I, as this quote shows, it says that if they don't get the home key funding, that they would have no obligation to pay us. And that's not right. So we want that term changed, we have a recommendation to change that. Regardless of the source of funding, the county's impact still remains, and we want to make sure that that's in this MOU. We want to make sure that the county pays a prorated amount of that TOT funding should this agreement be terminated. And so we have some firm response language in our recommendation to the terms tonight to make sure that this is on an even footing. Next slide, please. Yes, so, the transient occupancy tax reimbursement itself is a point that we wish to bring to the county. There is a difference between the way the county is recommending averaging the TOT revenue over the last three fiscal years, which were pandemic years. And as you know, those were some very low years, I'll show that in a moment in a slide during the pandemic, that would greatly reduce the amount paid to the city. We're recommending averaging out the TOT for calendar years 2018, 2019, and 2023 with an average. Those are normal years for our TOT revenue. And the amount that we are identifying in our recommendation to the MOU is three installments of $572,541. That totals a payment of about $1.7 million to the city. Those payments would be due, the first installment upon closing of escrow for the county's acquisition of the property, and the second to honor before June 30th, 2025 and 2026 respectively. So that's our recommendation for the terms of payment of the TOT reimbursement. Next slide. Just to show you a difference between the city's methodology and the county's methodology, you can see in blue the county's methodology using the difference by their method, those are COVID years, you can see that the TOT revenues were significantly lower. They're identifying it through fiscal year, we are identifying it through normal years, calendar years, and you can see the difference of $262,802 between our proposal and the county's. Next slide, please. The county's proposal identified the provision of two additional sheriff's deputies for three years and an embedded mental health clinician for two years. We want to make sure that this MOU is firm to ensure that these positions are fully funded with guaranteed upfront payment for those terms respectively. The county's motion also did not include, the county board's motion did not include the MOU language that the county is proposing for a $500,000 credit, whichever is less. And as, as you know, the sheriff's deputies are worth far more than the $500,000 amount. That, that $500,000 number was not in the board's motion, yet it is in this MOU, we're recommending that that be removed from the MOU. Next slide, please. The advisory committee was a point of the board's motion. They recommended the creation of a quarterly ad hoc committee. The MOU identifies it to consist of two county board members, two county staff members, two Millbrae City Council members, and two city staff members, along with representatives of the property manager, which is Episcopal Community Services. We recommend that this quarterly committee, this advisory committee, be amended to include an additional four members representing Millbrae residents and businesses. So we're recommending that that be added to the MOU. And this committee, the purpose of the committee is to discuss the status and the progress of the project, community concerns and issues, including property maintenance, landscaping, and resident selection criteria, so that we can ensure that this facility serves families and seniors as they identified. Next slide, please. The other thing that was concerning about the MOU is that the county did not include job placement and support for the displaced hotel and restaurant employees. It also did not include provisions for the support and relocation grant assistance to the restaurant. They were identified in the recitals of the MOU, but there was nothing in the requirements. And so we have identified language in this MOU to make sure that the county provides that job placement and support for, for those displaced employees, and that they also provide the support and relocation grant assistance to the restaurant. So we have language in the MOU that we're recommending to the council to cover those terms. Next slide, please. There's also nothing in the MOU in regards to property management and maintenance, the maintenance and aesthetics of the property. Those are very important points. There are a number of members of our community who are very concerned about the upkeep of this property. We have identified language to, to include that, to hold the county accountable for property maintenance, to ensure proper landscaping, building upkeep, consultation with the advisory committee. We also have language that we recommend to prohibit illegal drugs and alcohol on the property. And then finally, we have identified indemnification and nondiscrimination provisions. We want, we want that language to be inserted to protect both the city and future residents. So with that, that concludes my recommendation. We would love to hear feedback from the council on our recommendations this evening, and it's my understanding there are members of the public that have concerns with this MOU as well.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I apologize, I was remiss in, in indicating to the City Council that Hanson Bridget has a conflict of interest on this item. So we have Mr. Ed Lowe from the firm Jarvis Fay, who's been our legal counsel in assisting us with the preparation of the MOU, and he's via Zoom, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe, and thank you for joining us tonight. Council, do you want to go through a round of our questions before bringing it up to the public, or go to the public first? Okay, all right. And we'll start with the public. I have four speakers, three speaker slips, but City Clerk, there were also a number of comments that were mailed, emailed in, that, how do we read those into the record?
We don't, Mayor, they're just part of the record that we have, so if anyone wants to research the record, those are available, but we do not read people's comments into the record. If they want to read them in, they need to be present and read it into the record.
Or, or on Zoom?
Or on Zoom, correct.
Okay, all right. So those people, I know we got three of them today, and another set had come in yesterday. If you are listening, you need to raise your hand on Zoom.
And Mayor, another point, I mean, that, that is submitted for information to the council members, so as long as you have it in preparation of the meeting, it's, it's really for your use, but it is in the public record.
Okay, thank you. So first is- Okay, thank you. So first is Marian Kong, then Stephen Rinaldi, and then Alice Quang. And thank you.
Hi again. Actually, I read the MOU from county, and I trashed it in the trash can. And then I read the MOU from our city staff. I'm giving two thumbs up to our city staff. They done a wonderful job documenting everything. It was recorded on the September 12th meeting after the, you know, with, with Mueller's and then Slocan's, and then they, Canapah, they all add a little, little thing to, to, to make that motion. Okay, so I'm really grateful for our city. I had to say they did a wonderful job this time. I don't have anything question about that. But anyway, so I was, I spent seven hours on September 12th at that meeting. And, and then it's, it's over, it's motioned, it voted. So I am here to plead to my five council members as a whole, that's work together for the benefit of Millbrae. Okay? And that's, that's what, the resident need you guys to unite together to get the most out of this. And as you all know, we have, we are losing some businesses. That's not a good news. That's not a good news. So I actually plead you, urge you, please just work together, put your, put your difference on the side, and then work for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kong. Mr. Rinaldi.
Thank you, City Council. As in some Millbrae. First and foremost, just want to thank city staff for doing such a wonderful job with the MOU. I did too read the county's version of it, which had a lot of willful omissions of recommendations from the board of supervisors on the 9/12 vote. With that being said, to city staff, I'd like to offer up a couple of recommendations. One, based off of a conversation I had with Board of Supervisor David Pine just recently, and that was a suggestion of adding a moratorium within the MOU, so the county couches by surprise again and take another vibrant hotel from us the way they did. Second recommendation that I would make is to specify the room count, because in the MOU from the county, it was absent of what we all thought was going to be 60 doors, according to our conversations with board of supervisors, but changed on the day of 9/12 to 75 doors, if my recollection is right. I would highly recommend putting that in the MOU, so it holds them to what they said. And then lastly, just make the recommendation that the MOU states seniors and families, which I believe it does, but just reread through it again, make sure it includes that, so we hold them to their word. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rinaldi. Ms. Quang.
Good evening, everyone. I, first of all, I thank you again for our, our city staff to do the wonderful job and protect our Millbury's future. And Councilman Anderson and our mayor, and Gina Pappan, have been done a great job to study and learning what possibility we are facing in the future year for the loss. One time, attending the meeting, and we, our former mayor, Mr. Dan Quick, had asked Dave Pond one question. How about next 10 years, how much promise you can protect Millbury? And also next 20 years? He, Dan Quick, former mayor, and his wife have been in our city for a long time. You know, Kevin Quick was there, and has been planning commissioner for 30 years. We know how our city going to facing. I feel so angry, but like we heard, surrounding rental property, people is going to, you know, refusing to continue to rent, and certain business is going to surrender from Millbury. So me, I'm a business owner, I also serve in the financial service, I'm a very successful financial service agent in the nationwide, in my company. So I know what the inevitable loss is. It's very important. And it's not fair for the five supervisor, supervisor in a very short period, and not doing any study and voting for just the MOU, for whatever the condition is, not fair. And please, and using any possibility to bargain more. Bargaining is, I also saying last time, we need to bargain with the county and give our county a grant, our city grant, have a community residence, or hire professional people to supervising what their management for the property, because this is 2.5 million for the first year. Even they don't have any single essential statement with the ECS at all. How we can trust those people for more management, those 41 million's poverty is a waste. But still, even though we may not have a voice at this time, but in the future times, ask for the grant, and also ask a grant for the community residents at a yearly basis from the county fund, to have us to monitor them and communicate with the county, because we have a right. They need move a lot of money from Millbury, while we cannot at this time to bargain with them, to funding one from the city, get a grant every year, and from the residency to monitor them, and more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quang. I have no other paper slips. City Clerk, do we have anyone in Zoom?
Mayor, we have four hands raised. First speaker is Grace. Grace, please accept the mute.
Actually, I was on the last item, and you failed to call me. I sent an email that will explain it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah. Sorry about that. Next.
Next speaker is Karen Lobo. Please accept the mute.
Hello, can you hear me?
You're coming in great.
Hi, this is Karen Lobo, Clearfield Drive. I'd like to thank the council and the city staff for your work on the MOU. With, I have a few suggestions. I think it would be helpful to require the county to provide performance metrics on a quarterly basis. A few that I think we should consider are the occupancy rates per unit, including the ages. I think this would be helpful data when it comes to schools, and also our senior and community center. Turnover rates for those units, and maintenance request logs by the occupants to ECS. And lastly, emergency response calls to the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lobo.
All right. Next speaker is Emma Rios. Please accept the mute.
Ms. Rios, it sounds like we've got some backfeed here. Let's, let's not start the clock until we try to get that cleaned up. Can we try again?
Mayor, let's move on to another person. We'll go back to this.
Okay. Ms. Rios, you are coming in garbled, so we're going to call the next person, but, and then we're going to come back to you. We're not forgetting you.
Next speaker is Vivian Tam.
Hi, can you hear me?
You're coming in great, Ms. Tam.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Millbury Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the council members. I'm Vivian Tam, eight-year resident of Millbrae. Thanks for the opportunity to comment on the MOU. I took a look at the draft of the county's MOU received last Friday, and have a couple of suggestions on behalf of the residents. The first item is to include the residents into the subcommittee, and I just want to give a shout out to Tom and the city staff for getting that into the, that draft and advocating for that point. The second one is to address the safety concerns, and the proposal there is to establish an onboarding process so that we can make sure that the occupants are indeed families and seniors. We did notice that the MOU draft does reemphasize that the occupants should be folks in the family and seniors criteria. And within the onboarding process, we should have some type of process to check that they meet age criteria. We can check that it's still an alcohol and drug-free facility, and make sure that there's background checks conducted. There, I have six points, and I'm on number three right now. Number three is, the county is currently approving the applicants, and would love to see that the Millbrae city staff or residents be a part of the approval process, given that we're closer to what's relevant to Millbrae. The fourth point is that I saw that there was a mental health clinician listed on there. But we want to make sure that there's also access to folks who may need drug and alcohol rehabilitation services. The fifth point is, given that there will be children incoming, we want to make sure that we're, we have proper funding. And so we want to request two more points of funding. The first one is for the Millbrae schools, because the parents are requested to make donations of 1,100 a year per child. And so we don't expect the incoming children to be able to provide that. So we'd love to have some budget for that. And also, an impact cost to account for the new residents coming in. And finally, since this is a new program, and on the MOU, there's, the TOT funding lasts for three years. We recommend a budget review process timeline being established to make sure that the renewal for budget does happen after three years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tam. I think that was a little one in the background.
The other speaker, Emma, actually is not online anymore.
Okay. Emma, I'm going to give you one more time. If we lost you, if you disconnected yourself, we'll, we'll go into discussion. But if she comes back, we'll call you if you come back on that. With that closing public comment, with the exception of Emma Rios, on that, bringing it back to City Council, council comments. Councilwoman Pappan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to the staff for putting in all the work on this. And to the community, thank you. Some very good comments there. On the, I have several comments related to what happened at the board of supervisors here. I do believe they said they were going to continue the contract with the restaurant. So we haven't described whether they, what happens if they don't want to continue their contract. And I think that's what staff is offering here. Can we get some clarification on that?
Well, Andy's getting that information, so I can read to you. So, so specifically, it was board member Mueller said that there, let me find it here, what he calls the restaurant safety net, that if the restaurant were to fail, the lease was extended within one year, and that there would be a grant payment to the restaurant to find a new location.
Okay, that's correct.
That is correct. And we, we have that identified in Section F, which is the support and relocation grant. And it says that at the county's sole cost and expense, the county shall engage with the restaurant to identify and provide assistance that the restaurant may need during the 12-month period after the county closes escrow on its acquisition to avoid interruption or cessation of restaurant operations resulting from the county's acquisition of the property.
Great. Thank you. I do like the city's suggestion, particularly about including our residents and the businesses. I would like to suggest, if possible, that we include, in addition to that, a resident from the family that are within the unit and the senior population. Because if you're just including the operator, we may not be hearing the real issues that could arise there. And in addition to that, the mental health clinician, I thought was supposed to be used throughout the city here, and also related to, you've just said, mental health issues, alcohol and substance abuse. I thought we were able to, we would engage this mental health clinician with some of the unhoused, not necessarily at this location.
It is made available to the city, is the wording in the MOU. So it is citywide, and that, that language is correct.
Okay, I didn't quite get that it was citywide.
Maybe I can help. So I think that's a great question. So the term embedded is used, you know, embedded in the sheriff's department. And so we researched that. And so embedded in the sheriff's department doesn't mean embedded with ECS. It's not an ECS employee.
Right, right.
It's a, it's a clinician that is a county employee that's embedded in the sheriff's department that would be allocated to the city.
Citywide.
Correct.
Great. I'm not sure we were that clear on that. As far as maintenance goes, I think we need to be exceptionally clear on that. And by that, I mean taking photos of the entire facility, the facade, the landscaping, everything now, as it exists, and after the county's removal of the swimming pool, so that we can then hold them accountable to maintaining the property in such a fashion as to make the residents proud and the city of Millbrae proud. There was a good question by the, one of the callers here, as to the number of doors within the facility. I believe the board of supervisors mentioned a specific number here. Do, how do we hold the county to that number? Maybe not to exceed that number. But I think that's a good idea, so that we can evaluate the operations here. It may even be in the contract with the operator, but I'm not sure here. And not to be in the MOU, but I do think we as a city need to discuss what was mentioned here as far as turnover at the location. We cannot, we're not in a position to determine who is placed there, but turnover, I think, is a good idea. And also occupancy rates, if we could get that information, so that we can track also the response times or calls to the facility. I do know, and I just heard too, that a property nearby, a sale fell through because of the future of La Quinta here. So it is impacting the surrounding community at this point in time. The sooner we get the MOU, hopefully, we are defining clearly what, and I know the city report kind of left out seniors and families, but you've covered that tonight. So again, thank you so much on this. How are we doing on the time schedule? Because the board of supervisors only gave the city of Millbrae and their own staff 30 days to come back with this.
Well, I'll respond to that. I think the board of supervisors, how do I say, the city council is not subordinate to the board of supervisors. I think that the direction of 30 days was to the staff to get an MOU.
Well, I understand that. And there, the board of supervisors' MOU was lacking. So will we be able to respond within the timeframe?
The actions this evening, we will respond to the county tomorrow with our revised MOU, based on the action this evening. So yes, that, that will be, for the record, within the 30-day time period that was motioned by the board.
And again, thank you to the staff for putting in all this hard work and effort to reflect the city and the residents' concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Fung.
Thank you, staff. First thing I wanted to clarify, City Manager, you mentioned a moment ago, the clinician provided, promised by the county. Does that remain a county employee, or is it somebody that... Does that remain a county employee or is it somebody that we choose and then take direction from us with our staff under your organization so that we can ensure that the priority of that clinician is being set forth by the city?
So my understanding, Councilmember, that it is a county employee that would be under contract but embedded into the sheriff's department, allocated to the Millbury Police Bureau. And so just as we have a relationship with, with the Sheriff's Bureau here in Millbury, where we work collaboratively with them, I see that being the same. So we're the client, and so our request would be made, you know, through the clinician. We would not, they would, that clinician would report to probably the Bureau Chief here, which would be Chief Allen or the sheriff. We can get clarification on that, but they would be an employee, they would be a county employee.
Yeah. So I think that's my concern here is how do we ensure accountability of that person and setting the priorities so that if that person is to be a resource for us citywide, I want to make sure that it is in fact the case rather than, oh, she's taking, or he or she is taking direction from someone else outside the city, if you know what I'm trying to say. So I think that needs to be cleared up here and there might be some teeth required within the MOU to ensure that we get to direct this clinician in terms of his, your, you know, this priority for this, for this position. Another thing is that I think it was repeated by the county executive that La Quinta is meant for those who has already gone through any treatment, successful treatment program on an as-needed basis before they were to be eligible as an occupant within La Quinta. And I want to make sure that this is being explained and clearly documented on this MOU because there has been a report that some other jurisdiction has started moving folks strictly from the streets into these permanent supportive housing. So we want to be absolutely clear that the onboarding and the admission process follows exactly as being described by the county executive. That's all I got so far. Thank you. It was great work done.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yes, thank you for working on the MOU. A good MOU, obviously, is collaborative and it starts with trust. There's a reason we choose certain entities, choose MOUs over contracts. And just starting off, I think adding something to the effect and under the purpose of a commitment to the residents of Millbury and the greater San Mateo County community, just to kind of be a guiding principle, spirit when we do collaborate and work together, that we understand what our charge is. And that's to the residents of both Millbury and San Mateo, the greater San Mateo County, for the purpose of addressing this tremendous issue within our community. You know, with that said, obviously, the comment that was made by Ms. Lobos is spot-on. I've served on the housing board for the Community College District and that data that she is suggesting that we add is not just readily available or should be readily available, but it's also beneficial, including financial data. When we start having those subcommittee meetings, that information should be a part of the discussion, even if it's just to inform the committee members. And so I think that's a great recommendation. And then, let's see, we also want this MOU to not just, you know, sunset at an end in three years or how many ever years. We want this to also be a living document that we can review and extend if possible. And the best way to do that is to make sure that we're collaborative in how we work together and we're making sure that we're collecting data that we can use to make sure that both the county and the city is exploring additional streams of income to continue programs such as the mental health specialists, such as the additional sheriffs, to make sure that the data that we need to support those, and those things that continue to support not just the residents of this property, but Millbury residents and, like I said, the greater residents of San Mateo County. So making sure that we're capturing that and that this isn't just an adversarial negotiation, that this is, hey, this is an opportunity for two entities within the county to work together, to make sure that we're looking past 2027 and that we're making sure that these, the impacts of, of this sale of the property will be supported by both and we will work together, whether we're talking about you having the restaurant work with the county, well, guess what? Add the city in there and make sure that they have first dibs or something here in Millbury so that they continue to thrive. So I think it's great that we have this very strong MOU, but let's not lose sight of that partnership and that trust and this tremendous opportunity for us to work together.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilwoman.
Thank you, and thank you to staff for your thorough, detailed work on this MOU. In the interest of time, there's been a lot of really great things said, so I won't repeat the many comments that I also am on board with. I did have a couple of questions, or first, a comment. In the MOU here, it says the project is to provide permanent supportive housing to senior individuals and families experiencing or at risk of homelessness. So that doesn't necessarily guarantee that they've been in another program first. Not everybody needs that. And the case managers and the organizations that do this evaluation are very skilled and experienced, this is their field, of deciding if someone is ready for permanent housing and are qualified to put people in there that are going to be successful. And the at-risk of homelessness also means there could be people who get placed there before they become homeless to prevent them having to be homeless. So I think that's helpful in understanding the population and the placement process. I want this to be a very thorough MOU, but, you know, Councilmember Goodman was talking about trust. And I know through this process that we've been through, there's been a lot that's happened that's created lack of trust. So I hope we can work together to create an MOU that gives us a foundation to build that trust moving forward. Somewhat along those lines, one of the things that stood out to me, was there at any point it said that this was going to be 100% sober living environment? Is that an intention of the county?
I do not know one way or the other.
They have not made a statement to that point. I don't know if they've made that determination at this time.
Okay. At any point was there discussion that it would be a high volume of people in recovery that would need a sober living environment?
The term that they used was that this was for families and seniors. They didn't get into substance abuse, conditions, mental health. That's the only terminology that we've heard.
Okay.
Well, there, I mean, just for background, what I recollect hearing is that this is also units for people that are ready to take the next step for independent living. And so this was that next phase.
Okay. You know, I, I understand illegal drugs or illegal drugs, but putting the prohibition of alcohol in the property, I'm actually curious if that's even legal to do if it's not a sober living environment and curious if there's any other buildings in the city of Millbury or in San Mateo County that's not a sober living environment where residents would have, have that prohibition as part of their living environment. I do have a concern that that's based on our stereotypes and judgments of the folks that would be living there. And we made a point of saying we put in non-discriminatory clauses. And, you know, if this isn't as a way to support people in recovery, then it can come across as discriminatory. Just another question, there was some of the items that you mentioned in the slides that I didn't see in here. Is that because we're going to negotiate that first and then put the language in? Because there's some language that's edited and then some things that are not, like we talked about, community members, and I didn't see that? Or we talked about number of units and I didn't see that? Okay, so some of it just is still to be added? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing anything?
Yes, that will be added. And we've, we've spoken with Ed, who's on the horn, about adding that, but we want to make sure that that was a recommendation as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Couple of questions. I think from what everyone has said, I actually agree with all of those. I think the question Councilwoman Cahillan came up with on sober living, I have an email from Calagie early in the process saying it would be single men who have gone through a recovery process and are now moving to that next step. So I think clarification of that would be good, understanding that we can't discriminate. But I, it's my guess that they move to family and seniors because of the outcry of, of that issue. Some of mine are kind of, this property, once it's purchased, it comes off the tax rolls. Does that also mean it is exempt from other city contracts? For example, I do work in solid waste. I think I've talked to some members of the public about how difficult it is to keep multifamily dwelling, zero-waste enclosures clean. And given that most of the county uses a single-stream system and we're a dual-stream system, would the county say that they're exempt from using South San Francisco scavengers? I don't know, because the school districts are. And what that means is we educate the public on one way and then they're in a different program. Yeah, you go, you don't separate paper from cans at Bear Mills High School because you're using a different program. So just what are they exempt from in Millbury? And let's just make sure we have it. It's really hard to keep enclosures clean. It's really hard with multifamily, usually because there's a high turnover, so you no sooner train someone and then they're, they're moving on and garbage is very local. The city manager, I'm sure he's going to tell me, I can't bring this up, but I'm going to try. The city manager, Mr. Morgensen and myself, met with the Millwood Hotel on September 28th and at that, with Mr. Calagie, and they said, well, with the loss of La Quinta, they are losing their shuttle system. And the Fairfield Inn is losing its shuttle system because it took the quantity of all three hotels. So without that shuttle system, the Millwood is going to lose business and have now come back and asked us for help with amenities. But just to let council know that we have a meeting, and I mentioned to Calagie that we applied for a grant. At any rate, we are meeting with Mr. Calagie and a broad range of transportation people to Thursday morning to talk about a shuttle system. But if it, if it has to happen year by year, it's just not sustainable. That needs to be written in there too. And I'm worried, I think the city manager had to leave, but Millwood went on to say that with the loss of their tenants or their clients, then the local restaurants are going to lose business and then the local businesses are also going to lose business. So there is this additional trickle-down impact from the closure of La Quinta as a hotel. And I would like to see something along that line in there that there's recognition. I think the moratorium that Mr. Rinaldi mentioned is a really good idea because we're well aware that the Dillon Hotel actually also wanted to sell to them. And if we lose that and our two hotels are going to be less competitive to Burlingame and San Bruno that will have shuttle systems, we're going to continue to feel this economic hurt on that. My question comes from, Cahillan brought up alcohol, but when we said illegal drugs, but marijuana is legal now, but with this, again, local ordinances, we have our own local smoking ordinance for MFDs, which might have been the county's model ordinance, but would they have to respond for that, especially if we've got children or people with COPD living in the same environment? I actually, every, I did meet with a number of public residents and I think that the six items that Ms. Lamb brought up, I am complete agreement with if we can do that. I'm just not sure what we can actually get. And after two council members asked this, I'm still very confused. This clinician, are they going to be in the room that they're building at La Quinta for staff or are they going to be at our police department? And I would feel more comfortable if the sheriff was evaluating them, but I would imagine it's county health that's going to evaluate that staff person's performance. Can we get clarification on that?
Yeah, my understanding, then we can, you know, as, I've taken a lot of notes for a motion, that they would not be at La Quinta, that they would be in the sheriff's office.
So I had a number of residents, thank you, City Manager, sorry for cutting you off. I had a number of residents contact me about what if there's a new resident and they're having a bad day? So who's going to be there to help them through that bad day at the, the new permanent supportive housing?
That would be ECS. That's their charge. That's why the county's contracting with them.
So from this presentation the county has given, ECS will have four case managers and their own in-house mental health clinician. And then separately, the county is providing us a mental health clinician within the police department that is not a new program. This has been happening for a couple of years in some other cities being piloted already, right?
Right, that is.
So we would be replicating that. And we can see if other cities have had concerns that their mental health clinicians have been pulled to other places, but I think it's only in a few cities. So I think they're, they're responding to those cities.
We've researched that and so the council member is absolutely correct with the four cities on the pilot program, Redwood City, San Mateo, South San Francisco and Daly City. And the program has been very successful. We've talked to the chief in San Mateo and so this would model that and extend that into the city of Millbury.
I appreciate that. They're also both short time, so I appreciate the request for the very specific data on that. And we do have a Millbury family that has a business across the street from, one of them managed up in San Francisco, and that is not the case. And I did have a conversation with the mayor of Milpitas at Cal Cities about the Project Home Key in their location, and that is not. In the beginning, it was okay and now it's back. And basically, the mayor of Milpitas said, don't let the county operate it. That's what she told me about the one in Milpitas. So, you know, I'm hearing, oh, this is new and it's good and we're going to be that way, but I've got two examples that say no. So with that, can we get the data also, can we add to the data that the county has to provide, is some quarterly survey of adjacent businesses to see how they're doing?
A couple of things. One, I think a point of clarification, I think that ECS, you know, as Councilmember Cahillan said, that, that service is different than this clinician in the MOU.
Oh, I get that. Yeah. No, I understand that. So now there are going to be these four people on call and there's going to be one of them there 24/7. I'm sorry, thank you. 24/7, someone's going to be in that building to handle it.
So there will be a full-time live-in property manager, 24-hour desk coverage, four full-time case managers? I don't believe that's 24 hours, but we can find that out. And then one mental health clinician that's full-time, I'm guessing that's not 24 hours because it's one full-time position.
Let's, City Manager, if you and Mr. Morgensen can make sure that we're collecting as much data as possible. Because ECS is operating the one up in the city and we have residents in town that we all know, and that is not the way it is. And they've been running that process, that program since 2020. So there's a little bit longer history on that one, as well as the Milpitas location, than the, the new ones that San Mateo County has recently opened. It's a different set of, it's, what's going to happen over time?
Yeah, and I think that having the Oversight Committee, which was the motion of the Board of Supervisors, I think is a safety valve to ensure that it is being operated with the metrics that I think the Vice Mayor had mentioned and that, and that the member of the public, Karen Lobo, had mentioned.
So I would like clarification of just how many things the county thinks it's exempt from in the MOU.
Yeah, I'm not prepared to answer that tonight.
I know, but I, I think we should know what, we should know what they think they're going to, which our rules are going to follow and which ones they're not. Madam Mayor?
Again, I think that that is probably a closed-session item. Again, I think that that is probably a closed-session item, because I think that there's already disagreement on what the county manager said that they have governmental immunity on versus, you know, I just think that we need to probably have a different discussion on that.
Well, I think, I'm thinking more in terms of long-term management, as opposed to developer fees or something like that.
To answer your question, so are they exempt from?
Garbage contracts? Are they exempt from our smoking ordinance? Are they exempt from?
I believe they're not, but Ed Lowe, our counsel on this, Ed, if you'd like to address the county's operation as a residential unit, if they're subject to local ordinances such as our smoking ordinance, payment of water, sewer, solid waste. We know they're exempt from property tax, that's what, we do know that.
So I just wanted to clarify one thing. In terms of payment of those utility services and compliance to city ordinances, I mean, these are day-to-day, regular Millbrae residents, once they move in, and they're subject to our laws.
Correct. I don't think government has an exemption.
It doesn't matter who the landlord is.
To escape the law, we don't.
Yeah, it doesn't matter who the landlord or landowner is on the property. Just because, just because the property's owned by a governmental agency doesn't change the fact that the occupants needs to abide by our law.
Except, I'll give you the Mills High School example on that one. Mills High School does not have to comply with certain of our rules.
Different element of the law.
True, it's a school. I understand, but I just want clarification on that. And then I'm going to come back to me.
Sure, yes, please. So may I make a suggestion? That we notify the county as to these specific regulations that we have, and notify the operator as well, hoping that they will comply no matter what excuse they come up with, in order to be good neighbors. So I would suggest that we do that, notify them of our written ordinances, as the mayor has suggested. And then I had a real quick question as to these, like the oversight, how often do they meet?
So in the MOU?
Were we clear on that?
A quarterly meeting.
Quarterly, okay, thank you. Thank you.
So in final, SFO roundtable met the last Wednesday, and we know that our hotels, something the county has not understood, so I'm looking at TOT. Our TOT, our hotel occupancy closely mirrors the passenger level at SFO. So last week, Ivar Satiro recognized that we're now at 89% of pre-COVID numbers, so they're still rising. So on your chart that you, I was really pleased to know, we actually made over 600,000 in 2019. So definitely have to go on that. But also, have you accounted for the fact that that's using a 12%, not a 14%?
Indeed, we did, yes.
Okay, on that, and we make sure that that is noticed, but we're still recovering. And make sure that the county, since they so clearly did not understand the city of Millbrae in the seven hours that many of us were down there, that they understand that we have a very unique relationship with civic room travel. So China is still opening some airports, they're still not opening some, Taiwan is just bringing one back on, and that is a lot of our customer base here. So push those numbers as hard as you can. I guess I should be happy at 575, I'd be happy with, they're going to have to reflect what it would have been if it was a hotel in perpetuity on that. I guess, it's hard to say for now, because yes, with the 30 days, you'll get back to them tomorrow, we've got the shuttle discussion on Thursday, a lot of moving parts on that. But I think they also need to understand that this is causing a ripple-down effect to many of our businesses, and make sure that that's clear. And you were at the same meeting, Mr. Morgensen, with the Millwood on there, and just how much business we're going to lose to Burlingame and San Bruno because of that, which then is also the restaurants and the Walgreens and the, on that. Okay, I think that's what I've got. Other, I'm sorry, Councilman Fong.
Thank you for the time. On the discussion of drug and alcohol usages, I think house rules are meant for safety of our occupants. It is also meant to ensure the success of this program as a whole. I mean, let's look at it this way. We're here to make sure all this MOU, all the things that we're discussing, is to ensure the success of this implementation of this La Quinta, so that the folks who we are intended and trying to help, in fact, can be successful in this facility. And that's what these house rules do ensure. And I think it would be fair to say that, you know, some of these substance abuse problems has certainly contributed to our statewide problem in terms of homelessness. So having these rules in place, it's not meant to be discriminatory in any way, but rather, it's meant to ensure the success of this facility, so that we can help those who are in need. That's the reason why they're there. Now, in some point, if they're so successful that they can reenter society in a productive way, just like everybody else, then they're certainly free to move to wherever they want to move to, and then they can continue to have the same privilege, just like anybody else. Every single property that I've ever lived in in the past have house rules, and this one is no different. So, and then also, another thing is, we'll get to that. And then in terms of selection and the onboarding criteria, here's what I will say. Throughout our experience with the county, successes, trust is earned, and I think it would be fair to say that we look forward to them earning our trust in this entire process, so that we can all be successful together. Now, you know, just wanted to make sure, also ensuring the success of the occupant that will be in there, living in that La Quinta facility, so that as they onboard new residents, that these residents has gone through, as Mr. Callagie had promised, that they have gone through all those necessary, on an as-needed basis, those successful treatment programs, so that they can come in, so that this facility does not become a sort of a street-to-home type facility. And I want to make sure that these rules are there for the success of the occupant there, and the protection of the residents there as well. So just want to be clear on those points.
In terms of, this is a permanent housing. So in saying it's permanent supportive housing, but I want to focus on the permanent right now, because in terms of saying, we want to give them certain house rules for their success, and then if they do well enough to move on, then they get their freedoms back. This is permanent housing, it's not transitional housing. So that, that logic and that thinking is troubling to me in that. I think we have to be careful as outsiders, deciding what rights people living in that residence have or don't have, and if they're truly about their success, or about our fears and concerns of who they are and what they might do, and not trusting their individual human choices.
So here is what I would look at. They are one of us, we're not outsiders, they're not outsiders either, we're all together, but we're all Millbrae residents. First of all, I want to be clear. If I were to live in one of those units, I want to make sure that everybody else followed the same house rule, just as I would, just to ensure my own safety. Right? And I'm sure you would as well. So these rules are not to be discriminatory, not to take away anybody's freedom per se, but rather to ensure the success of my journey here in that facility, if I were to live there, or anyone else's journey within that facility, if they chose to live there, chose to live there. And I want to make sure that this is a choice.
When there was deliberations over the Rollins Building, was this a discussion or consideration for those residents?
What, what?
Whether, the Rollins? With the Rollins is another 100% affordable building.
The Rollins is a, right, the Rollins is an affordable housing facility, affordable housing program. It's a rental, it's an affordable housing program, it's not permanent supportive housing, it's a very different program we're talking about. So they're not, this is apples and oranges here, with all due respect.
Not necessarily, because there's a very good chance that any of those residents living in the Rollins have experienced homelessness at some point in their life, that they went through a transitional program before they got to the Rollins. So again, I think we're making judgments about the population that will be living there. So I'll, I'll leave it at that, but yes.
Before I let the vice mayor go, I have a house, my house in Mountain View that I rent, and I have house rules. And if they smoke, they're gone. So, and that's, you know, because I'm, if it catches on fire, it hurts all of us. So I have fairly strict house rules. If they abuse their parking privileges, because it's a townhome complex with not enough parking, it gives me grounds to remove them. Thankfully, well, I did have a tenant that smoked, and I had a redwood deck that cost $5,000, scared the daylights out of me when I found cigarette butts all over it. So, I mean, we all live with rules, and part of the problem that's being discussed in the city is a group of people that get housing but then don't like the rules. I understand that you're advocating for permanent supportive, but we all live under rules on that. Vice Mayor?
I want to give everyone a little bit of grace here, because I know it's not the intent to be discriminatory or coming across as not understanding, I just think it's our level of understanding, and we all have different levels of understanding, different levels of lived experience. But to the council member's point about wanting to be safe in your community if you were to live in that housing, that's the same feeling I'm sure you have in your community that you live in, in the greater Millbrae, that I would have, that I would want my neighbors to follow house rules, or what we call them, laws. We have a social compact that we're going to follow laws, or we get arrested. And so I don't, I get that there's a level of gatekeeping that has to happen for the success of this property, but for us to go overboard, I think we just have to kind of come back a little bit and make sure that we're not doing it in a way that we wouldn't want imposed on ourselves in our current living situation. Just like you mentioned, the Rollins is a permanent housing, this is permanent housing. You add the word supportive, supportive is there for the residents, yes, it's a benefit, but if I had a mental health issue, or if I had a substance abuse issue, and I was living at home with my parents, that's supportive housing as well, because I'm sure they want to make sure that that individual is supported. But we just have to be careful to not exclude or to impose rules on people that is unreasonable. People are unhoused for many reasons, and many have nothing to do with substance abuse, drugs, or mental health. A lot have to do with discrimination, lack of inventory of housing, lack of a livable wage within our county, and the cost of the housing. And so let's not just jump to this scapegoating that, you know, everyone in this property will in fact have some type of drug abuse, or substance abuse issues, or mental health issues. They may, but if they don't, this is just, it's just a slippery slope, and we just have to make sure that we, as council members, try to understand that and keep that at the forefront. And if you don't know, let's go out and talk to people. There's numerous opportunities to find out who our residents are, and many of these residents will be at this property. Many residents that you talk to that have some of these same experiences may be your neighbor. Take that into account, and just try to look at this through the lens of someone that's charged with trying to do what's best for the entire community, and trying to do the least amount of harm to our residents.
Thank you. The school district has, the school district is losing property tax. When we met with Mr. Callagie, he's like, oh, it's only $75,000 or $80,000, but we heard from residents who have kids in our school system and are expected to pay $1,100 per year, per student, and clearly, these are low-income families coming in, so they won't be able to afford that. So I want to make sure that we expect the county, and they can use Measure K funds for it, to cover that cost of the new tenants of this building. I think that that's fair. They may not think $75,000 isn't a lot of money, but if you talk to the parents at Lamita Park School, they will consider that a significant amount of money, a loss of $80,000. And I would have wished that the school district was not going through its change of superintendent, that they might be with us today, because this impacts the school district, too, on that. Measure, the Board of Supervisors did discuss the priorities of Measure K at their board meeting this past Tuesday. Supervisor Pine brought up a concern of the ongoing maintenance for the hotels specifically being converted to permanent supportive housing or housing in any form. He didn't think there was enough money, but they apparently have some extra millions that they could put for that, but we should make sure that we monitor that, and that that is there for perpetuity. If they lose Measure K funding for whatever reason, what's going to happen to us in that? And I sent city manager and Mr. Morgensen, I watched the whole thing, and I timestamped certain discussions that I think were applicable to Millbrae. In terms of what Councilwoman Cahillan said, the one property manager, front desk open, forced caseworkers, do we have that in writing? What if over time, they don't have $2.5 million to spend every year, and that becomes one person there from the hours of 9:00 to 5:00? Do we have, what happens then? And there is a difference to this in the Rollins. The Rollins is paying property tax, this is not paying property tax. So there is a difference right there in these projects. And this will hurt us financially, period. I think that's what I've got. Anything else to give staff?
I just want to put two little clarifications. I understand there's a property tax component that the schools are losing, but also, the Millbrae School District, the basis of the funding is on attendance, more so than property tax. And then just the $1,100 that many people have mentioned tonight, for those that are not aware of the Millbrae Education Foundation, it's a nonprofit foundation that fundraises to provide music instruction, technology, reading specialists to all four elementary schools and the middle school in Millbrae. The $1,100 is a request that the Millbrae Education Foundation makes per student as they do their annual fundraising. It is not a required fee by the school district to parents, it's just a fundraising goal for the Millbrae Education Foundation, and there's, I would say, 50% or more of families don't pay that. There's a lot of fundraising that happens for the MEF to reach those goals.
Thank you. City manager, Mr. Morgensen, have we given you enough?
Well, Mayor, what I'd like, you know, there's a little bit of some discrepancy here, so I've made a lot of notes for a motion. I'd be happy to read back to the city council, everything that you've said, see if there's an agreement on a motion. I think there's one or two points that there may be some more debate or disagreement, but again, a motion and a majority of the council rules, obviously. So I'll start with, first and foremost, the makeup of the committee. It was recommended this evening that we add four additional people to that committee. Those four are residents and business owners. Then there was an addition to add a representative of a family and representative of a senior that actually reside, and so that would be added into our MOU if the council is agreement with that. Next, ensure the clinician reports to the city, and make sure that that clinician is, as I view that, they are embedded within the sheriff's department, they're part of the Sheriff's Bureau here in the city of Millbrae, their office is full-time in the Bureau, and they report to the chief, and the sheriff, and to the city, just as we have the relationship with the sheriff's department. Next is to qualify and quantify the actual number of units in the MOU. So it was the Board of Supervisors' motion of 75 units, 45 families, and 30 seniors, I actually think on the PowerPoint.
I actually think on the PowerPoint, it said 35 seniors. That would be 80, but it's 45 families and 30 seniors is what the direction has been. So we can qualify and quantify that. Next is to add in metrics, specifically in those include the occupancy rates per unit, turnover rates, maintenance requests by residents, emergency response calls that we already have a metric on, and then financial data. Then next, there was a discussion to add in a photo documentation of the way the property exists today. And we can either add that into the MOU, or we can do that just for our own documentation that we have. May not necessarily be required in the MOU, but certainly for documentation for the future, we can do that. There was mention, not of the council, but a public comment that I wrote down, specifically Supervisor Pine, about a moratorium within the MOU that this would, that the county would no longer pursue additional housing, just for consideration. Measure K funds for children that will reside in the units to offset school fees.
City Manager, could I add to that childcare? They're going to need childcare there, too.
Okay. And then quantify the actual number of staff that ECS will supply, so we can, we can quantify to ensure that, you know, there are four staff people, there's always a, a full-time ECS employee at the front desk, and then the, and then the additional clinician. So that is what I have written. There is some discussion. If I turn the council's attention to the, to the memo I sent yesterday, page number five, it would be item number G. It sounds like there's some question whether we should include that or not include that.
Can we check with our council on the legality of that?
Yes, I think, Mr. Lowe, if you can hear us, there's a question on item G of the city's MOU on page five. I'll read it to you. So G says drugs and alcohol prohibited. Illegal drugs and alcohol are not permitted on the property in the Millbrae supportive housing project.
Right. Then I'd have to look in that, into that and bring, bring that back to council to see if that is discriminatory under any protected class or, or group.
Can we add that it's consistent with other, like, projects throughout the county?
Yeah.
I would say throughout the region.
So, I mean, our control is the county, so I would, that's why I'd say.
Counties are all in their alpha state.
Oh, yeah.
Let's be honest. On that line, City Attorney or Acting Attorney, the public said providing access to drug and alcohol rehabilitation services, which I don't know goes along if you're trying to keep a dry clinic, but will there be a place where people, if they fall back, can get help?
Right. So Mayor Schneider, there is on your red line attached to the memo from the City Manager on page four, item C, we've defined mental health services as to include but not limited to support services and counseling for mental health and/or illness and alcohol and substance abuse. I don't know if that addresses your concern, but we, we can expand that if it's council's direction.
I think, I think that gets at, sorry, I read the earlier versions over the weekend and the date, today's version, I had other meetings today. There was a request on the onboarding, to have a city staff person as part of the onboarding. Is that something we can do?
I think that's far exceeding.
Okay. I'm just going through the list. And then the establishment of an annual budget review and request for funding for changing Is that something we can try to get?
Yeah, I think that's consistent with the subcommittee's work. Yeah, I, I was going to mention the same thing. I think that is consistent with.
You have more trust. I have zero trust.
Well, there's still.
So we're at two different places on that. I have zero trust.
But I do think.
Mayor, are you asking more for an annual review of the MOU versus what the Oversight Committee would be doing?
I think the cost, the cost to the city of Millbrae and to the community of the operations at this particular location.
I think that would, I think that would be up for review at the end of this MOU. I don't think that that would be something where it would be a living document, where they would come back and adjust the numbers.
This goes back to your point that this MOU should go beyond 2027.
Right.
On that. But I was at the Board of Supervisors when Supervisor Mueller said, well, if your biotech does well, then we won't have to pay your city money. And that's, if our biotech does well and it brings in new revenue, that's to make up the holes that we've had in our budget for decades. Not holes, excuse me, City Manager, but to allow us to provide the level of service our residents do not currently get that other cities have.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to get into the whole fiscal impact and philosophical discussions, because as our population grows, our cost grows, and, and I just don't think it's appropriate. I do think, though, that with the subcommittee or committee that's being formed, I will tell you, I feel comfortable enough, because if there are any issues, then we take it to the board. We take it to that elected body. And so, you know, staff, whether city staff, county staff may have their opinion and direction. Ultimately, it rests with the elected representatives and officials. So I feel comfortable in relying on the elected board members, that if anything does go sideways, or if the committee identifies things, whether it's, I think it's a great idea to have residents as part of the committee. I have faith that the elected board members will right the ship.
I trust you, City Manager, if that's the way you feel. But, I mean, the process does not leave one to trust. So can't fix a process that they did not want to acknowledge had problems. So, okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may.
Yeah, I don't think the, we don't, we don't have any control over Measure K funding. I, I just don't think that, I mean, that, the Measure K funding, I don't think that can be a part of this. I think that's overreaching, and we will lose credibility at this point in time.
Yeah, I agree.
We have, I think we got Measure K funding for life moves, and it's just, it's not up to us. And I think we need, as the mayor noted, there was no, there's not a lot of trust here. Let's try to stick to what we can actually do here and maintain our credibility throughout. So I, I would suggest that we do not dabble into the Measure K aspect of what the City Manager noted. He's, thank you.
I agree with you in this context, except they're setting their priorities of Measure K funding next Tuesday.
And we should go for whatever we can get there. So, yes, I mean, whether it's, I, I think we should actually separate that out.
Well, that's not the grant. This is just their categories that they want to fund.
Right.
Next Tuesday, the grants will come out in November with money coming through in March, or they do an annual review in March.
And I think we, we have a lot to ask for in that realm, whether it's life moves, childcare, a whole bunch of stuff outside of this MOU. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anything else? City Manager, I'm, we'll be asked to approve this MOU, and I still don't have an answer of what they think they are exempt from. So if you could please find out and say, yes, Anne, they will follow South City scavenger, they will follow the local rules, I'll be happy. Just let's get it in writing, because the stories have changed so much with Mr. Callagie. I just need it in writing. Thank you. All right. So I think with that, we had a number of items that have been read to us, some things that were discussed. City Manager, I didn't hear what Vice Mayor brought up right at the beginning, which is this is an MOU that they're looking at for three years, and then are they hands washed? Or is this in perpetuity, or how to do that?
Yeah, I, I think that's a good point of discussion. I, the funding for the two deputies and the clinician is, you know, that, that's qualified, right? That, that's a three-year for the two deputies and two years for the clinician. The other operating aspects of this, I think, could live in perpetuity. Maintenance of the building, the, the committee that's being formed, those are things that I think we could add in the MOU and say, okay, some of these things terminate, but the MOU continues to, to live in perpetuity. I, I think that that's a, a very good response or, or position to, to have, actually.
And I appreciate that, but the loss of property tax is one way that we fund police, fire, et cetera. So that's a forever loss, to be picked up by everybody else in the city.
Well, it, it, it's, that doesn't matter, right? Because even if the MOU is terminated or the MOU goes away, the, the county still doesn't pay property tax.
Right. So there should be another mechanism that they basically pay the cost of the population by removing a property off property tax. That is my bugaboo, the removing, that is how this is different than Rawlins apartments or any other affordable housing we build here in Millbrae.
And I agree. But the motion that we have in front of us is, is an MOU based on the motion of the Board of Supervisors. And so the fiscal impact.
Can I say nothing ventured, nothing gained?
Well, I, I think the fiscal impact of this is, it was recognized by the Board of Supervisors for this term, right? The, the three years of TOT, three years of two additional deputies, and, and two years of a clinician.
And none of them lived there, and I doubt any of them have been here until they came to the Sheriff Activity League. So they have no idea what condition Millbrae is currently in, another part of the problem of the process, and trust on that. So if I can't get it, I can't get it. But I would like to see that somehow the language that the Vice Mayor suggested in the beginning as a way to grow trust, that it's in there. And then if you can add that clause for the things that are reasonable, the maintenance, long-term maintenance, et cetera, et cetera, and the staffing. My understanding in Milpitas is they started with people on site, and then it got less and less and less, and then a good percentage of the time is no staffing on site at all. Counsel, are you comfortable with what the City Manager has stated to try to change in the MOU based on public comment and your comments tonight? If so, then I need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Further discussion? City Manager, you're okay? You think you've got?
Well.
Or do we need, do we need to actually?
I'm still unclear with item G.
What I heard.
Our attorney said that they're going to research that, so. Ed, I'm looking to you to.
Item G?
Right. And, and I am going to, I am going to research that and advise staff so we can run that down for council.
Just, just for reference, this is our version of the MOU going back to the county.
Correct.
Correct? Yes. So I'm sure county will do their own due diligence as they read over our version of it, just as our current legal counsel will review. But I will make the motion in support of the current wording in section G.
Would you be willing to have it be consistent, consistent with the other properties throughout the county? When we went for the visit, it's pretty consistent with what we're asking for, but the wording, I think, is a little too sharp. And I think the county's intent is to make sure that it is a alcohol and drug-free facility. And so let's, can we give it, give the, some leeway for our staff to work with them to make sure that they, that we somehow utilize the wording that they're currently utilizing in the spirit of what this message is trying to get to?
Let me try to answer your question this way. I'm relatively confident that the county wouldn't just take all of this on face value.
Right.
They'll probably come back with some version of, you know, a compromise, hopefully, version of the MOU. I mean, they're here, we're here, and hopefully will be here, right? So I'm sure this will come back, and then we will have a final version, hopefully sooner rather than later.
Okay. And I'll keep my second, with that being the intent.
Does that make sense?
With that being the intent.
That's the intent.
Okay. Motion second. Again, under open, final conversation, at the meeting at the Millwood, the City Manager, I believe, had left, and I shared with Mr. Callagie and the Millwood and Mr. Morgenson email that I've received from a neighbor and/or tenant in the Redwood City property, where there was a tenant who had been through this, this is permanent supportive housing, and then had problems, and the county had to go through quite a bit of process to evict him, asked, and, and the people had reached out to me and said, Mayor, you know, this person could very well just get moved up to you in Millbrae. What Mr. Callagie told us, and please, Mr. Morgenson, if I get this correct, correct me, was that if a tenant has a problem and is not living according to whatever the rules are in that facility, that they would go back to a shelter or a different level of, of assistance in there, and they wouldn't just simply move them to the next permanent supportive housing on that. But that's what was said in a meeting, and it wasn't recorded. I just want that recorded now.
Hey, there is one more point of clarification in the discussion, and that was a comment about Supervisor Pine, Pine's recommendation on a moratorium. So I just need clarification whether that council agrees it's in, it's out.
I agree. Everybody else? A moratorium on taking other hotels in Millbrae. I see three of us saying yes. I don't see the other two.
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, all five. Thank you. Do you need a more formal motion? Because here, all it says in the, our agenda item is provide direction regarding a draft memorandum of understanding between San Mateo County and the city of Millbrae regarding the acquisition. You've picked out the points. We've got a motion in a second with some concern over G, which Mr. Lowe will check and make sure that we're, we're abiding by all law. G on page five.
Mayor, we'd be happy to then read back the motion and the content then of the MOU.
Okay, I.
Just one more time if that.
I, I think that would be good, especially for the public that has paid attention to this.
So I will refer to our city clerk to read those provisions.
Hello, City Council, and let's see if we have this down. We, so this is the direction from the council to propose changes to the county's draft MOU, as provided by staff, and to add these additional changes. First one is the Oversight Committee makeup to add four additional members, to include Millbrae residents, business owner, and representative of a family and senior that reside in the property. Number two is to ensure a condition report to the City Council embedded into the SMSO as part of the Millbrae Police Bureau. Number three is to quantify the actual number of units in the MOU. Number four is add metrics reporting specifically on occupancy rate, turnover rates, maintenance requests, emergency response, and financial data. Number five, add photo documentation of the property as it exists today. Number six, quantify ECS staffing, ensure that there's always full-time ECS staff at the front desk. Number seven, state items that live in perpetuity, for example, property maintenance and staffing levels. And number eight, to accept a Pines memorandum on taking other hotels in Millbrae.
Moratorium.
Moratorium, excuse me.
Any further discussion? City Clerk, call the vote.
Councilmember Papin. Councilmember Cahalan.
Aye.
Councilmember Frank.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
New business item 10 passed by a vote of five to zero with the motion as read.
Excellent. Thank you.
Five to zero.
Okay. Agenda item 11, update of the El Camino Real Millbrae Avenue Landscape Medium Improvements Project and Design Charrette. This is an action item. Mr. Williams?
Yes, thank you. I will hand it over to our Director of Engineering and Public Works, Mr. Sam Batista, to then introduce our team of design consultants that we've been working with. Just as I get ready, this is a, we had an internal meeting with staff and the design team in the design charrette, wanted to bring this to the City Council so you could start to, we, we could start to get your vision, your ideas, and your thoughts and direction as we start more, more design. So this is just really the first time, it, it's new, we wanted to get to the City Council very early.
very early to get your direction and, again, vision for the re-landscaping of our medians on El Camino and Millbrae Avenue. Mr. Batista.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. Tonight you will be receiving an update regarding the El Camino Real Millbrae Avenue Landscape Medium Improvement Project, and tonight we have members from NCE, we have Matthew Gaber, who is the landscape architect, Charles de Valiere, the landscape designer, and then we also have civil engineer Jenny Van Dyke, who will be giving parts of the presentation. So at the end of the presentation, we, you and the public would be able to provide comments and direction to staff through this design sherret. City staff has provided NCE with initial comments of the project. The proposed design should address safe maintenance access as worker safety is a critical issue. Staff discourages tall and cluttered plantings and prefer low drought-tolerant native plantings, which are easier to remove trash from, to remove trash from and require less pruning. Staff also acknowledges that the project should install purple pipe to accommodate future use of reclaimed water for irrigation. So during the sherret, NCE will introduce various design concepts and styles and whether there is a preference for a natural or sculptural aesthetic and determine important locations for visual impacts. And so based on the landscape feasibility report, NCE will discuss the following topics: health and suitability of the median trees, utility lines, signage, lighting, physical constraints, user experience. And so with that, I will turn over the microphone to Matthew.
Evening, Councilmembers. It's a great pleasure to be here and really looking forward to getting your input and ideas on the Millbrae medians and El Camino Real. What we have put over here on the side, if you've gotten an opportunity to look at it, that is the whole entirety of the project, and we did that, that's two miles long, we did that so you could understand the scale of this project and how many different conditions exist along there. Also, all the dots represent the trees, so if you had a chance or if you do get a chance, I highly encourage you to look at that, and you can see the conditions of the trees and the general context of how long an area that we're looking at. May I have the next slide, please? Once again, this is the, and you have this too with your feasibility report, this is the inventory of the existing trees. We've had a arborist, it's one of the first things that we did during the whole feasibility study portion of this project, and they went and documented all the trees out there. The summary of that is shown graphically right there. If you look at it, you can see there's a lot of red, and then there's some green. And the red, basically, red and orange represents trees which are either dead or poorly suited for the condition or just not thriving. Green represents trees which are viable, they're doing well, and you'll see that there's just not a lot of trees that are really doing well. There's images there, and it's in your feasibility report too, of how many the conditions of those trees, how much space there is between them. So the trees, overall, they're, unfortunately, it's not a thriving forest that you have, and there's a lot of issues with them being overgrown, conflicted utilities, roots, and the soil too, that they just don't have a lot of soil to grow in, which is critical for trees. Next slide. The next thing what we did here is, after we had the trees inventoried, we started going and looking at the ground and going down below the ground, and this diagram that you have in front of you is looking at all the utilities. And once again, we use kind of a similar color coding to represent areas where there's no constraints, so basically there's no utilities underneath, to areas where we've got a bunch of stuff underground, which is really going to impact our ability to plant and to put structures in the medians. As you can see, there's unfortunately not a lot of green throughout here. There's the red, typically that represents where we have really major utilities. Some of the utilities that we have out there are, there's a water line, which is SFPUC water line, this is a large water line, it basically parallels the median, so it, you know, there are some constraints, and we've been in discussion with SU PFC about where we can locate the trees, and that's an ongoing process that we're going to be continuing doing. Another major utility that goes through there are the telecoms, and so that's Comcast, that's AT&amp;T, Level 3, and those utilities are in a joint trench, that means they're all bundled together, and unfortunately, that goes down the middle of the medians for a long stretch. So once again, when we're looking at whether we're going to plant trees, we have to closely coordinate with these utility providers because they might not allow us to put trees on top of them. They have maintenance requirements, et cetera. There are some crossings too, if you get into that, it's primarily PG&E, which has crossings, and those go across the medians, so they're not running underneath, those aren't as major of a constraint. Another major issue or someone that we're going to need to coordinate very closely with is Caltrans, because this is a state highway, and that's Jenny's area of expertise, so if you have questions about that, we can definitely bring her in. But the project will have to be reviewed by Caltrans, and they're going to be concerned about maintenance, they're going to be concerned about visibility, you know, safety for cars and crossings, things like that. Next slide. The next thing we looked at was the suitability, how much space do we have? Or, I'm sure you've all driven down, driven along El Camino, and there's a lot of long, thin medians out there, and those are typically part of the turning pockets for cars to turn, cross the streets, and those too present a lot of constraints. One of the constraints is they're just not very wide, and for a tree to grow successfully or even any plant material in those medians, you need a lot of soil volume. Trees need water, they need air, so the more space that you have for them, the tree is going to do much better. And there's strategies that we're developing to help those trees thrive, and that's some of the things that we want your input on tonight, but that is another factor that's really impacting our design. You can see the red and green, once again, areas of green, really no constraints, and there's lots of space, the median is wide, it ranges as about 12 feet in width, so there's plenty of room to get trees, larger structures, plants in there to thrive. The red is where it gets down to four feet or less. Next slide. The next thing we did was, and this is kind of how planners and designers think, but we always find it's really helpful to show a section through the streets, and basically what this is, is imagine you sliced through the street, and what we wanted to do is just give you a sense of the scale of the width of this and the size of the medians in relationship to the width of the total street. You can see that the top is what the existing is, and down below is a proposed, and the little green areas represent where we have space for putting in planting or some other elements. And we did these, you can see down at the bottom, there's a little red line, that represents where these sections are done, and we've done this along the entirety of the street. Next slide, please. Here you go, moving further down towards the Safeway complex, same thing, median here is 15 feet wide, definitely have some space to put in some larger planting, not a lot of constraints, and we can do something substantive here. Next slide. And once again, this is another condition, this is where we have some of the on-street parking, where you have the turn pockets, and you have the, you know, tuck-in places where people can park. You can see here, we still have some small medians, five feet in width, but we've got more space to do something in that area. Next slide. And then, once again, this gives you a relationship to the parking lots along there, and where we do have some substantial areas, parking lot, and this is at Millbrae Avenue too. So Millbrae Avenue, there's already existing plants, if you look over there, it's that vertical strip, there's a lot of green on that, trees are doing well, there's a lot of space to plant in there if we decide to plant, and it just has a much nicer character. The arborist report talks about the size of the trees and maturity, and that's something that we're going to have to look at closely too, because a lot of the tree species you have out there are close to maturity. These trees are typically selected because they grow quickly and people want that. We're not talking about oaks or trees that are out there that can live 200, 300 years. Next slide. So now into the fun stuff, what, this is what we really want to get your thoughts on, and just really stepping back and taking some, trying to get creative about what could be out there and what the character of the median is, how does it represent Millbrae, how do we address creatively some of these issues that we don't have a really broad median in a lot of places, and so we're probably going to have to get creative with what we do in there. The first picture on the left, you probably all recognize that, Cerc de Triomphe in Paris, and the point of that is just talking about scale. As we are trying to show in those sections, it's really, it's long, the street's long, and it's really wide, and the beauty of something like that is it has a very strong, has a big scale, and it can help scale down the street. So the idea is, if we do put things out there, consider the scale and maybe think big, and have something that's very strong statement, and it's a way to create a very strong identity for Millbrae, because this is, El Camino, as you know, stretches for a long way, and it's, I live in the East Bay, we have a lot of streets like this too, you don't know where you are. And so having some type of intentional, very strong statement to help identify Millbrae could be one of the strategies. Next picture shows arts, different kinds of art, there could be art that celebrates Millbrae, there's something unique about Millbrae that we integrate into the art, so when you're driving through, you know you're in Millbrae. Another idea, and staff was very responsive to this, was the idea of sculpture out there, and what's compelling about this sculpture is not so much the subject matter, but once again, the sense of scale, that these are tall, they're thin, they're unique, it's a way that we could integrate some design elements into these medians and where we have really constraints, big constraints. A couple of other ideas down the bottom, really inexpensive way to create a signature landscape and a sense of space is through lighting. Lighting's, it's pretty cheap to put out there. I live in Berkeley, and there's many streets, if you've ever been to Fourth Street in Berkeley, it's all lit up during Christmas time, during the holidays, and it's very dramatic, and it's a relatively inexpensive way to make a statement, do something interesting. It could also be seasonal, it doesn't need to be just at traditional holidays. So lighting is a really strong way, and it's also kind of 24 hours, you know, if a tree is there, you see it during the day, but at night, if you have something else that's interactive, that's a really great, simple way, and staff was very supportive of that. The other images just talk about the character of the plant material, the scale of them, plant material can be really dynamic, and the whole character can be defined just by the plant material. So if that's the way we had, whether we use drought-tolerant, very drought-tolerant plants, whether we use native plants that have a different kind of character to them, or we have planting that appears more lush. So the character of the planting is another really powerful design tool that we have. Last image there talks about, just shows an image, and we want to highlight that because once again, we have some pretty constrained spaces in there, and as you saw in those sections, it's pretty flat going across, the street doesn't have a big crown or any of that. So another idea is just to play with the up and down, basically, of those medians, and how can we create some interest, maybe by having the planting go up and down, introducing walls, there's some areas right now where it's bermed up with pavement that holds that soil in place, we could start to really engage that too, and that's another way of creating interest, creating something that's dynamic, and the walls, whatever structures you put out there could be part of the community's identity. Next slide. And so this is where we really want to get, love to get your feedback and direction and input. We've basically broken it down to three concepts, three approaches, and of those approaches, there's a couple of variants. So the first one is linear, something that's very straight, organized, predictable, and uniform, and that could be manifested in terms of your plantings, it could also be in terms of what elements that you put in there. So if we integrate sculpture into there, if we integrate walls to berm it up and get more space, that all has a very linear character to it, and it's very clear and concise. The next one is more naturalistic, and this could be, imagine like an oak woodland in this area, that we choose trees which are not, you know, classic lollipops, that they have an overarching canopy, they're multi-trunked, and then within that, we start to introduce more natural materials, like the use of stone, and the stone could be used, once again, to build up the edges, it could become an identifying element for the city of Millbrae, and then also the planting character would follow that too, something more natural, flowy to it. The last one is a combination, this one is called fluid, basically it's kind of a mix of those, that we'd still have, there'd be some linear aspects to this, but we could start to introduce more sculptural elements into this, and introduce curves and have it have more of a flowing character. So those are the big ideas, and what we'd love, once again, love to do is get your input on this, what you see as a priorities, what you would like to see as the character of the landscape and the approach. And I believe there's one more slide. That's it? Okay, great. And then Charles is here, he's, something we always like to do is record your comments and have interva, interactive session, and so feel free to offer up ideas, suggestions, we'll write them down, you'll get this back as part of report, and it's a way to kind of get the creative juices flowing and stimulate discussions and have this be more of a workshop experience.
Thank you. I have kind of a dumb question before, oh goodness, Sam is still here.
No, City Manager, was tonight our concept of a design sherret, or are we going to come
back and do another design sherret?
Yeah, so I mean, that's a great question, I was just sitting here thinking that, you know, we throw a lot at you and say, okay, what do you, and you need time to digest it and think it, but I think tonight is just the first step of kind of that 30,000-foot vision of, you know, do you like a linear, Chancé-Lisez type of design? Do you like something that, my word, a little bit more eclectic, that we have some fun with our medians, you know, that, you know, the design team presented? So there's kind of those three, if you go back to that slide, kind of the three concepts.
For me, it's just a question of process, because I've participated in sherrets, usually they're multi-day, in fact, we had a design sherret for the redesign of Broadway back in 2016, I think, so that helps us figure out what kind of comments we have to give you tonight, or do we have a little bit more time?
You have more time, this is a launching point, this is a launching point to say, okay, what are your ideas, brainstorming, visioning, and it's a launching point that then we can come back and say, okay, based on that, then the design team can go to work on, you know, one of the three options or a combination of those options, you know, the linear, naturalistic, fluid. If you have any questions on exactly what that means and how that is, tonight's the time, you know, to ask that and just get information and then, and then just kind of get some guidance on-
Okay, I just didn't- Okay. I just didn't know how to run.
What are your general thoughts on?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Without counsel, opening it up for counsel comments. Vice Mayor?
I'll start. Thank you so much for the presentation. I really like all of the designs, and I think it's because the lack of any true connection of what we have now versus where we want to be. We've heard some talks tonight about businesses, and driving traffic, and making sure that, you know, we're a viable city for years to come. And so, I think this is really important and very timely. As I look at this, my concern is just, how do we leverage your vision, your creativity, and the city's willingness to do something and think outside of the box, and make sure that we have the funding to be able to do this? Are there any opportunities there? I guess that's what my original question is. And then, secondly, you know, I just want something. I mean, because what you've presented here tonight, from the lights, to the linear, to the naturalistic, the trees, having a method to the madness, I think it really tells a tremendous story. And, you know, Millbury is, call it the city of festivals. And so, I'm just wondering if there's a way to just create that, and your storytelling of how this stretch of land can be created in a sense of saying, hey, this is who we are. So, when you drive through this, you know that you're in Millbury, the city of festivals. So, something to that.
That's a, I love that, and that's just what we were hoping to get from you tonight, the city of festivals, and that type of input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'll let Sam speak more precisely about funding and the aspects of that. Our understanding is that it's probably going to have to be phased, because we're talking two miles of medians. It's a lot of space, it's a lot of landscape. And maybe what we do is identify priority areas first, maybe at the gateways, do those first. Staff has expressed a strong desire to do it right the first time. And to, that's why if we, maybe we just do a few half a mile, or whatever, something first, go out there, we really amend the soil properly, and I know I'm getting in the weeds here a bit, but those, some of the critical things is that if you want the plants to survive, the soils, if you typically find out there, that's not farmland. And so, we need to amend that, remove it, and that would be part of the, major part of the process.
Could you speak to how that proof of concept could build on potentially creating other funding opportunities, whether federal, state, or local, regional?
I will defer to our funding expert here.
Oh, you know, depending on the types of methods, or, you know, if we wanted to try to do, what is it, like Xeriscap, or, you know, we could try to get funding for drought tolerant, native plantings. So, you know, there are grants for that type of, you know, for instance, the grant that we got for converting our, this, what is it, demonstration card in the front, we got a grant for that. And we do have a grant for making a demonstration card in drought tolerant area here, so that could be a funding source. But we would definitely have to, you know, just be on the lookout for grants. I understand that Measure K could be a funding source for this, because, you know, we wanted to beautify the area, make it, you know, transit, make it a destination. You know, we want people to see how beautiful our medians are. So, you know, there are, you know, definitely, there's going to have to be some research in trying to find these funding sources, but we're definitely looking all the time for grants.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
And if I just may add one thing to that, so part of the design process is always money, and thinking about, you know, we're not going to show you something that's going to be completely realistic. You know, we'll keep the money, we have to have that always. And part of what we do is we always prepare cost estimates, and that's something we'll be sharing with Sam and the staff throughout the process. So, there's clear about how much it costs, and where we're starting to go over budget.
And I think part of that, if I may, also, on the cost, is that's really what we want to hear from the council tonight, also. You had mentioned, you know, the conduit for lighting, installation of lighting, installation of correct irrigation, installation of, you know, public art, you know, or those are things and the elements that, you know, the council says, yeah, you know, we like that, yeah, go forth with that, staff. Because projects like this, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, plant material's cheap. It's the sanding and painting, and the infrastructure, and the undergrounding, and the utility relocation, you know, that's the expensive part. But knowing kind of what the vision of the council is then helps us then to phase it, budget it, be able to fund it.
Are you able to speak to everything else that we could see from this process? How does it impact foot traffic? How does it impact the bottom line of keeping our stores open? Can you speak to how you envision that helping?
Well, I think a couple of things. I think that beautification of a city is both a tangible and intangible, right? It's an inviting place. I mean, there's been studies about street trees, and how that, you know, attracts people, and kind of lifts people up in their whole quality of life. So, I think that there's just kind of this inherent number of variables that we're doing that continues to make Millbury a desirable place to want to live, and to want to conduct business, and to want to visit. So, I think this adds into that, right? And that could be local traffic, it could be international traffic from the airport, somebody has a layover. But I think those things that make these things warm, lighting, lush landscaping, whimsical fun, art, and your point about, you know, it's being the city of festivals, maybe we do something internationally, right, with our sister cities, that we incorporate, you know, in maybe plant material from our sister cities, or some type of public art, you know? But we'll get into that detail, to go back to the mayor's question. There's a lot more to come. This was just, okay, are we on the right track? What's the vision? What are those elements?
Thank you. Councilwoman Pappan, just a point of order. It is 10:35. This is critically important and incredibly exciting. So, I will be asking council for an extension of time tonight, and I'm sorry to have you all here so late, but.
It's a pleasure.
This is just, we need to spend the time. Councilwoman Pappan.
Okay. This basically defines our city. Anybody driving down El Camino, anybody coming in Millbury Avenue, this is our city. And you can tell, just when you cross over to Burlingame there by the hospital, just changes absolutely everything, and the impression of our city. So, this is so very important, to do this right, not to, I understand phasing it and that, but not piecemealing it. This really has to be done in a beautiful way, because right now, our karma is not very good. Thank you for taking out some of the dead trees already.
No, they got cut down.
Cut down, okay.
Finally gone.
But we need to do this in so many ways, and we need to do it right. The reason we're in the situation we're in right now is, it was half-assed to begin with, and we cannot do that any longer here. So, I don't know if the city can buy Powerball tickets, but that would be nice. Okay, so, the power just went out on my computer here, let me just plug this in for a second. So, yeah, I want to see spectacular here. And I'd love to see, too, exploring public-private partnerships, because we have new developments coming in. Also, working with our transit agencies, I've already mentioned this to Sam Trans, is that I would love to see the most spectacular bus shelters. If anybody is taking those along our El Camino here, or even, I hope this will transition into improvements on Millbury Avenue as well. So, to dive in right now, I totally agree with the technical and the lighting aspect of the center median, and leveraging that during the holidays in one way, shape, or form. I think that's a fantastic opportunity that we have, also because we have like a 24-hour Safeway, 24-hour Walgreens. That aspect of our El Camino needs to be leveraged, that this is wonderful if you're coming in from anywhere in the world, and you're coming to one of our hotels, or you're coming to our restaurants, it's only going to improve the overall aspect of what businesses we have, and what businesses come to Millbury. So, I think that is significant here. So, the lighting here, the, there was a discussion about canopies, I think is so important in how this progresses along the lines there. Also, landscaping, the foliage, or whatever we put in there. I know, you know, fluid, and I would, I hope we can just go kind of natural here in one way, shape, or form. I don't, when you talk artwork, it gets expensive. So, I'm not really, I wish, and again, if we had the Powerball ticket for tomorrow, that'd be great. But at this point in time, lighting, both in the median area, on the sides, and for public safety aspects, is so vital, on our crosswalks, everything that we have. The signage in your portfolio here, page 27, I think we can do way better than that, and we need to do way better than that. So, I hope this would be some sort of a, 28 is much better, because we've already been through that process as to the signage, but let's be a class act, please. Uplighted trees, I think that's great. And I'm, the physical constraints bother me greatly here, because of the way we can't, I mean, I'd love to see us anticipate the runoff. You're saying, we discussed bioswells, but then couldn't use them. I mean, if we can, in any way, use them, because it's so important. The runoff is really terrible to the environment, to the bay, everything like that. I hope we can expand on that. There must be some sort of technology that is better than we currently have here. As far as, you know, I think you have to take out all the soil that you possibly can, and I think you mentioned that at one point, and transition it into something that will really allow things to thrive and reflect our community here. Some of the parts that are paved over, I didn't see a discussion on that. If we can help the development of the medians by tearing out the paved over part, then yes, absolutely. The watering must happen here, but we need to take advantage of the natural resources and how those play out. So, without taking up everybody's time, I would love to see, again, the canopy kind of thing. We have to do better in whatever we put in there. So, I don't really like hearing, no, you can't, but I'm hoping you can explore more so. Really, the sustainability of this project. So, my theory is, go big, do it well, don't piecemeal that. And let's look for some public-private partnerships as we progress down these lines. And two, I know one of the most difficult things is to deal with Caltrans. So, once we reach a point, we need to do full hardcore press with all the politicals and everything that we have, so that this doesn't get stalled, because everything with Caltrans gets stalled. So, whenever we reach that point, we need to bring in every political resource we have to take this to the next level. Thank you very much, this is exciting, and I look forward to it.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Just two things I might add. So, the signage, page 27, that's an inventory of what's out there, and that's just one of, we're not going to, we're going to have to put some of that back in there, because it's just Caltrans requirements and traffic safety requirements. But page 20, 28, definitely.
Is better.
Okay, that's the way. And this also ties into that diagram that's immediately adjacent to you, and some of the other information we had in there about consistency with the general plan, that you've already done the whole planning process, you've looked at El Camino, you've looked at pedestrian crossings and the character of it. And what we do, what we're going to be doing, at least in the medians, is taking that to the next step, to try and realize some of those ideas. That diagram there just quickly emphasizes where the gateways are, so at either end, that when you come into Millbury, you know you're in Millbury. It's a pretty emphatic statement. The smaller arrows represent pedestrian crossings, and what we can do to enhance those. We're not going to be able to put in traffic signals at all those locations, but the landscape can do a heck of a lot to really improve pedestrian experience and the sense of safety crossing the street. And then, overall, with those crossings, is just making these connections to both sides of El Camino, so that there's connectivity, and it's not, one side isn't isolated from the other.
I wanted to mention really quick, we may be able to find some grant money as far as water resources. Also, there's some new technology on crosswalks, that I would love to be a pilot program on, where you, because we are so wide, you push the button, and then you cross, but it keeps you, it doesn't stop blinking until you cross a barrier on the other side, which would be helpful to people of all ages and moving across there. So, it's a new technology, but it's really, it helps, because we, it's so difficult crossing there. And then, two, I don't think you mentioned any, like extending some of the curbs, which is so annoying to us drivers, but sometimes, public safety, I think we need to look at that, because it's vitally important that whatever we do here, in order to enjoy the pleasure of what we provide, it must be safe. Thank you.
Yeah, and unfortunately, those, Sam has a vision for addressing those as part of another project. We're going to, we're focused on everything that's within the existing curbs of the median, so we're not going to be able to change them or widen them. But whatever we can do to enhance pedestrian safety, we're absolutely going to be doing with the planting and with other elements we put into the medians.
Yeah, Mary, if I may, so on that note, you know, as the council may recall, with the adoption of the specific plan, downtown specific plan, El Camino rail specific plan, we're working with Caltrain, Caltrans on a parallel path to eliminate a lane in each direction, widen the sidewalks, have dedicated bike lanes and that type of thing. So, that's a component part of this. The nice thing about the center medians is that's fixed, right? So, the investment that we make today, and get a head start on all of this, it will not move. So, if that kind of helps.
Or doesn't.
Well, no, I think it does.
Wait till my comments.
I think as we, as we progress, right, success begets success, and I think that working with Caltrans, and I agree with the council member, actually, I think PG&E is more difficult than Caltrans, but Caltrans has been, they've been really good. I mean, they've been excellent with the staff. But we need to implement, right? We need to take that next step, and we need to take that action. So, anyway, just hopefully that helps, and keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Cahillin.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation, and helping us understand all the different options, and language, and components, so that we can think about this this well. A couple of things that come to mind for me, you talked about us having a lot of trees that are not in good shape, and not having proper soil. So, I don't know if maybe through the process, there's some support and training as we implement new medians, new plants, new soils, that we have the proper information to maintain those over the long term. The, I agree, I just, I love that idea of thinking about when you drive through Millbury, or when you're driving down the long El Camino, you know you're in Millbury, and that it's beautiful, that it has a theme, that it flows. Yeah, I really like. Yeah, I really like naturalistic and fluid components. I know, and you're probably on top of this already because it's your field, but just to put it out there, there are several spots on El Camino where there's, you know, left or U-turns from either direction or from east-west where there is no light or no stop sign. And even right now, it's not the greatest plants, but some of the plants that are there are high enough that it impedes visibility on those turns. So I think on the last slide in the lower right, there was that example of, it was kind of a design in the medium, median, but low planting, but it still had, yeah. Like, that kind of stood out to me when I thought of those areas where it's low, so you have that visibility, but it's still a creative design. That stood out to me. I know art is expensive, but maybe with grants or public-private partnerships, maybe at the gateways, it would be exciting to see something. And yeah, to think about our themes of festivals or Millbrae history, what those design elements could be. I also really like lighting. I think that makes it very vibrant. I think those were the, and agreeing with the sustainability, both from an environmental component and a budget and staffing ability to maintain for the long term. Thank you.
Just to kind of comment on the art. The art can be, we could have a dedicated piece or you have an artist program, a lot of communities have that, 1% for art, and they get pieces through that. There's other ways, like this median you talked about, that's kind of artful. That's actually in Mexico City. So there's, let's, I guess I want to kind of reframe, there's like art, big, huge monumental structure. And then there's kind of an artful way of looking at just regular landscape elements that you need to put in, looking at them creatively. That's something we're doing on some other projects where very tight budgets. So we're trying to find ways to be creative with mundane elements, you know, even if it's fencing, how do we take that fencing and tweak a little bit so it's much more interesting and rich than just the mundane chain link fence?
I would only add, our community development director left us, but we still have on our goal setting for 2023, 24 is a developer fee with something like a 0.01% on art and climate change on those. So there are ways, there are ways on that. And since Anders walked off, I'll take the floor. Okay. I loved everything in this. I read the three feet versus five feet. We know that the soil out there is terrible and we need to do the job right. And if that means taking it down to wherever we hit utilities, then let's do it. I have a cousin who wrote his PhD on microryzae. Each plant has its own microryzae community. So if you don't build that community, you're not gonna have healthy plants. So let's do it the right way on that. Here's the problem I have, and maybe I'm gonna speak a little bit of my family here. Depression-era parents, always felt working class, never went for what was right, went for what was just okay. And I think that's how Millbrae has behaved. And I think that's how the community, the greater community, has treated us. So I understand wanting to be good on budget, but let's do what will make us proud. And then if we have to go section by section, the first section is, oh my God, that makes the funders out there say, wow, I'll fund into this. So let's not shoot ourselves in the foot right from the beginning on that. In terms of your style, I'm more naturalistic, but I like the fluidity part. I read through everything. I am our tree person. I do work in the environmental field. I also asked staff to pull up a slide that I'd like you to look at. I'm our air noise, our noise person from the airport. We are extremely unique in the type of noise that we get and that a nature-based solution can help with noise. And in fact, there are studies out of London that even thick bushes, I'm not saying thick bushes on, in here because of visibility, but thick bushes can cut down street traffic, which can allow people to sleep better at night. But I will tell you, last Saturday night, during a heat wave with an inversion layer and flights leaving every minute, my house was hell, hell on that. So I already told the city manager, if you guys want to cut down all 85 trees, it's like, no, at least hang on to the redwoods in front of the fairfield. Because if you look at this chart, you can't see it, this is where we believe low frequency actually grows as it leaves the airport. So I would like you to look at nature-based solutions as much as possible to the degree that we have. You know, look at thick trees. Here's the difference between trees that look great in the fall and drop their leaves and we lose them in the winter. But in the winter, the higher humidity means less noise. So I mean, all of these things can kind of be factored in and out, although I think a lot of these noise studies are still in their infancy. But please consider this. Now, those gray areas doesn't mean there's not noise, but the green areas mean this is where the FAA currently doesn't realize that there's a lot of noise in back of jets. They in fact don't even measure ours. So we're hoping with the new FAA authorization and the noise metrics, they will be adding the type of noise that we are almost unique in the world in that most of the flights take off along towards the bay, leaving us Millbrae with our hills concentrating low-frequency noise. And plants can break up the waves. Usually it's gotta be a pretty thick set of plants, but they can help break up the waves. So I would like you to consider noise, as well as noise. I mean, if Caltrans comes in and rubberize asphalt, I know there's rubber problems and storm drains, but it does make it a lot quieter on that. Here's the other problem I have with this. Our El Camino looks like, it looks horrible. So I'd love to see this happen quickly, but I'd love to see it. And I'm glad you said that, city manager, that we're working with Caltrains and we shrink our El Camino now and we try to widen those median strips. If we're gonna try to create pedestrian, I always forget the word, safety areas, havens? What, I just can't, what is it?
Refuge.
Refugees. I always forget that, that. We're gonna have to do that. And the other thing that the plans are gonna have to do, and the city manager and I saw this with our new landscaping at the rec center. The kids go into middle school, people using the park, they just walk all over our low-line plant. So there's gonna have to be some plant to at least let them get big enough. But I watch people cross El Camino Real mid-block all the time. And we have lost a number of people just in my eight years on council. And if Councilman Hollibur was here, there was an agreement between existing developers to build that low green fence, if you've seen on the frontage road, I still see them hop over that too. But maybe in your plans, you think of something, and a fence can be artistic. And in fact, with the new laser cuts, if that's, they're getting gorgeous out there. And maybe that will help with a combination of planting, and I'll have to extend the meeting. Help us with that. In terms of trees, redwoods are the number one tree for absorption of carbon. They're also, because of their thick foliage, good at noise blocking, spruces are better. But redwoods are number one. And I was thinking, if, I just had a person I met online. She's at the tree conference out in DC right now. She lives, breathes, I brought her down to Big Basin. And, you know, most people come to California and one of the things they really want to see are our redwood trees. So, and I guess we can raise their skirt a little bit on there. So, but with the trees on that versus having the ones that change fall colors versus the need for noise, there's gotta be some balance on there. But I love what you did. I will tell you, I hate these cement things. What I see when I'm next to them are cigarette butts and they're heat islands. And now all of Millbrae from two blocks on this side of El Camino Real are considered extreme heat danger. So looking at the heat island impact, creating the overarching trees is a way to keep our people safe and the other benefits that trees provide. So I'm looking forward to seeing what you recommend, but I do kind of love my redwoods. And for those, if there's a way to save. But I think we need to go to Caltrans. And Sam very nicely got me a meeting with Caltrans and I complained about all kinds of issues all over the city. But let's keep that meeting up and see if they'll help us widen our median strip a little bit before we're locked into that, that two-foot margin. And I'm with Councilman Cahillin, I believe that art will, and I kind of liked your tall skinny ones because it allows you the visibility in there. But I'm gonna tell you two other things. Right now, Caltrans plan says they're gonna re-asphalt Millbrae in 2027. And then our then-assemblyman, now congressman, got a little under $800,000 to CCAG to do bike lanes on our El Camino Real, telling me that they were working with staff. But we've got all these other groups out doing things in Millbrae. Let's make sure they're doing things we want, not, and I'm gonna be blunt, not what they think they want, it's what's best for Millbrae. So give us really good designs. Sam said xerophytic. Again, in my field, we understand xerophytic, but xerophytic has so much decomposed granite that it gets full of cigarette butts. I mean, that's how I see it. Because that's what happens with it, you know, 19th Avenue has the cactus. And it looks good sometimes, but it also is awful full of garbage in there. So I get that. But I don't want us to be so water-conscious because we're gonna have a tertiary treatment plant and we're gonna have our own water. And the purple pipe is gonna get up there and we can water everything with purple pipe. So let's think a little bit lush. You know, the cities that have got their rose gardens, you actually go, wow, I feel good. And that's really weird to say that, but, and the city manager's comments about our sister cities, my thought on that is we have a number of parks that are sister cities. We, and we're working on a Japanese garden, contemplation garden, that we can do some work like that. We have lots of Millbrae to replant on there. So I think, I couldn't be more excited with this. Let's not do it cheap. Let's at least set that up. And there are climate change goals right now. If the Social Equity Commission can get us into the EJ list, that opens up a whole huge new gateway of funding for us. So there's a lot of strategies going on right now for that.
Yeah.
So, did I, I think I said everything, and thank you for pulling up the slide. Just know that we have this noise problem and it is unique.
Oh, yeah.
And I'd love to bore you with it, you know, if we ever have some offline time.
And Mayor just appointed business, so if you want to continue the meeting.
All right. Can I have a motion to continue? 30 minutes, because we have one other agenda item. It should be quick, but 30 minutes. And we actually have some good news to share tonight.
We have one public speaker, too. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay. Okay. Councilman Fun, you were the, we need this motion first. I need a motion. I've only heard 20. Do we get 30?
Move for 20-minute extension.
Okay, we'll go for 20 if we have to extend. There's some stuff we have to talk about after.
This is where the council gets loose. So there's a motion for 20. Is there a second or not a second? If there's not a second, it dies. There's a second? Okay. So there's a second on the floor.
Okay. Call the vote, please.
Councilmember Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Cahillin?
Aye.
Councilmember Fun?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder, thank you. The meeting is extended to 11:20 PM.
So, Councilman Fun, you were the only one with comments, without comments.
A lot had been said. Good to go.
Thank you. And we have a public comment, and I did have the slip.
Good evening, council. I know it's late, so I'll try to be brief. There's growing awareness about the impact of light pollution in our cities and to our ecosystems. So as excited as I heard many people on the council were about the lighting possibilities for the medians, I think we need to be attentive to that, especially, you know, uplighting in particular, especially if there's no control of where the light goes, is especially bad in terms of the distraction it creates for insects and birds. Sierra Club put an excellent, what I think, webinar together a couple of months ago on this, called the Dark Sky webinar, that I can certainly send to all of you at some point. So please be attentive to this. Maybe because it's uplighting below trees, it has less of an impact on the environment. But we, I think we should be able to have nice aesthetic lighting, but also be aware of the light pollution that artificial light creates. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chan. I would say, given the Caltrain or the BART station, that thing is so horrible with light pollution, knock it down. That gives us plenty more points on that. The night skies or dark sky presentation was really good, so it is worth watching. It's where I learned about bats needing a particular frequency of light. The frequencies we're using are hurting bats, and that's really bad for all of us. So thank you, Mr. Chan. All right. Bringing it back to council, we've given you some suggestions. What's a timeline, next steps? Or did you do that and I've forgotten? It's been a long day already. On the mic?
So hopefully we will bring back, you know, some designs in December, you know, so it clears the Thanksgiving holiday. I think that's a lot of food for thought, so.
And, and I think that you said in the beginning, if we've got a little bit more time to digest, do we send comments to whom?
Me.
Thank you. Okay, and this is an action item, but it's...
Don't forget to CC me if you send it directly to Sam.
We always CC you, Tom, so, so we know that. So this is an action item, but I'm not sure how to pose a motion. It's to go forward and continue moving forward?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
With, with the comments, I think, I don't, we don't need a motion on the comments. I think, you know, there's a lot of commonality and direction that we've received.
So moved.
Just, are we on the right?
Okay. Move second. One other comment. When I read through this, it doesn't look at Millbrae Avenue from El Camino Real to Rollins Road. It may be beyond the scope, but all of that lovely red brick is just one huge heat island. And what happens is some of our unhoused population kind of hang out there. I've had it happen twice now where they step right in front of my car, but I'm anticipating, so I'm going about three miles an hour. But that's become a danger just by people hanging out there on that. So if we could add that.
So Mayor, on that, on that note, so the Millbrae medians on the west side of El Camino to Magnolia are part of the scope. The Millbrae medians east of El Camino are not part of the scope.
And there's no way we can add it?
I would recommend we do not add it because I think that that is a totally different design, a whole lot of different engineering.
Different problem because of the overpass.
Right.
Okay. All right. I just, I mean, it's getting scary out there. Okay, thank you. If there's no other comments, if we could...
Call for the question.
Call the vote, please.
Councilmember Pappen, thank you. Councilmember Cahillin?
Aye.
Councilmember Fun? Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
Item number 11 passed by a vote of 5 to 0.
Mr. Batista?
Thank you.
We're gonna do council comments, but one of them you need to hear, unless you were planning on. Okay, you're gonna stay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 12. This is waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance amending the Millbrae Municipal Code Sections 8.05.1200, notice, delinquent accounts, shut offs, reconnection, and 8.05.1260 discontinuation of water service, and this is an action item. City manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is really, as you'll see from the staff presentation, just a consistency with state law, a lot of the things we're already doing. There's two significant items in state law that have to do with the timing of notification. Currently, the city provides 72 hours. The new state law, seven days. But I'll hand it over to Mike Sung for a very quick briefing on the ordinance amendment.
Thank you, City Manager Williams. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. So, next slide, please. We'll go straight into the background of what this is. So back in 2019, the state had passed SB or Senate Bill 998, the Water Shut Off Protection Act, and this was aimed at protecting residents. So it had increased protections for these residents. And this was enacted shortly, right before COVID started. Also, what ended up happening is while we were facing this pandemic, the governor basically had a moratorium on shutting off any water up until towards the end of 2022. And that moratorium did expire, but the additional benefits for the residents for SB 998 continued to exist. Next slide, please. So what's state law? State law now is 60 days instead of 30 days. Our mini-code, our current practice is 30 days, and now it's 60 days. It's basically a discontinuation for non-payment. And if that were to actually happen in the future, information would be provided on how to restore the residential service. We continue to do that now. We continue to do that now. And also residents that do meet certain health and financial requirements, they'd actually, wouldn't be subject to the shut off itself. I'd like to also stress that the city has not shut off any residential water in the last three years for delinquent payment ever since COVID started. Next slide, please. So in the revised written policy, four of the five elements already exist. There's a plan for deferred or reduced payments, and we actually already have that. We have an alternative payment schedules. We work with people if they're having problems paying us back. We have a formal mechanism for contesting or appealing. That's already in the mini-code. We also have a telephone number for customers to discuss options to avoid discontinuation. That's also something that currently exists. What's new is the policy is now going to be available in English, Spanish, Chinese, Tagalog, Vietnamese, and Korean. Next slide, please. So as City Manager Williams had mentioned, we need to give at least seven business days. Our current practice is 72 hours before possible termination of service. What we continue to practice is that we make a good faith effort after we try to telephone somebody, after we send a letter and it returns back undeliverable, we'll actually physically have somebody go over there and try to contact the resident. And if not, they'll leave it in a conspicuous place, a tag with information in regards to the water shut off as well. If an appeal is filed, and if that does happen, we won't discontinue water service while the appeal is pending. So that's still a current practice. So with that, staff's recommending that we introduce an ordinance amending the Millbrae Municipal Code Sections 8.05.1200, Notice, Delinquent Accounts, Shut Offs, Reconnection, and 8.05.1260 Discontinuation of Water Service. That, I'm intending questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sung. Comments, questions from council? Opening it up for public comment. I have no paper slips. City clerk, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Mayor, there are no hands raised.
Okay. Absolutely in support of this. I talked to the city manager earlier when we were debriefing the Board of Supervisors setting their priorities for Measure K funds. I know that we can help cover low-income people, but I think that the county use of the half-cent sales tax that all of us here in Millbrae pay for, this would be a good use. So I'll be sending a letter to Supervisor Pine, adding that, asking that that be added to their use of Measure K funds, because it would allow people to stay in their homes under that. That's one of their criteria on that. But I'm all in favor. Any other discussion? If not, motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fun. Thank you, Ms. Kalin. Any further discussion? City clerk?
Just to be sure that the motion is to waive the first reading and introduce...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
And they're such nice, short ones instead of what community development brings. Yes. Do you need, does MCTV need me to reread these?
No, I can read it for you. I'd be like, so would you like me to go ahead and roll call?
Okay. Councilmember Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalin?
Aye.
Councilmember Fun?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goodman?
Aye.
Mayor Snyder?
Aye.
The City Council waived the first reading and introduced their ordinance amending a Millbrae Municipal Code Section 8.05.1200, Notice, Delinquent Accounts, Shut Offs, Reconnection, and Section 8.05.1260 Discontinuation of Water Service, and the motion passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. All right. If some council members don't want to do council comments, I do have some that I want to get out there in a request of a subcommittee. Who would like to go? Thank you, Ms. Pappen.
I'll go fast. Thank you very much. FYI, and very exciting, the tennis courts at the recreation center are now open. Yay! I don't know how many years it's been, but that's exciting. Lions Club Golf Tournament this Monday was a great event. Thank you to everyone who participated and volunteered. Japanese Cultural Festival was also another wonderful event. I think it was our 18th, right? Something like that. And the new Council General of Japan was there, so it was a great way to welcome him to the Bay Area. Also attended the CORA fundraiser, which is Communities Overcoming Relationship Abuse, so domestic violence, the Attorney General for the State of California, Attorney General Bonta was there, introduced by our own District Attorney, Steve Wagstaff. To date, sadly, San Mateo County has had five domestic violence-related deaths, and we're not even through the new year. So please, if anybody needs assistance, there is assistance out there, don't hesitate to call. Caltrain's electrification, went to San Francisco, saw their new train, which will be active next year. Also want to emphasize that the San Francisco Caltrain station actually has businesses in it. So I am hoping that we will pursue taking over the business or putting some businesses in our BART station and five of the stations within San Mateo County, so that we can get some revenue and improve the travel experience for everyone who goes through those stations, besides tearing it down, as the mayor said. But we're studying that. And also, as a member of the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, we are working on a potential bond to help fund housing throughout our region. Eighty percent would go to the counties. I'm working on setting up meetings with each and every city. Their staff needs to meet with our city staff and our housing experts there, instead of some of just the agencies who don't actually build the housing. And finally, I'm hoping we can follow up on the mayor's letter to the cities and elected people regarding, and the housing stakeholders regarding the 488 units. I know several cities wanted to participate. We've got one letter back. I think we can get many more in support of that. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Kalin?
Thank you. It's, we've had short comments the last few times, so just make a few things. Just following up on the CalCities conference, I didn't report out on that last time. And two real highlights for me. One, the city of Rialto, that's in Southern California, shared their model of addressing and working with the unhoused population in their city. I would really love to get their presenters together with our subcommittee and Chief Allen, maybe Sheriff Corpus and Life Moves, to share those experiences and resources. I think we could really replicate some of what they're doing to address what's happening in Millbrae. Also had great conversations with council members from the other BART cities, get some things started about how we might be able to collaborate together. And also went to a great presentation on budget maturity and looking at different models of budgeting, matching your budget to your strategic plan, and being strategic and making dollars go further. So maybe that's something we can look at, bringing, learning about as well, following up on. Our city of festivals, there's been so many wonderful events, the Autumn Moon Festival, the SOW fundraiser, Rotary Club's Relay for Life, the Japanese Cultural Festival, and the Lions Golf Tournament. And I know I'm missing more that I attended, but just thank you and congratulations to all of our incredible community organizations doing these great events. The MEF Fund Run is coming up, so encourage folks to participate in that. And a reminder that there will be CERT training from January through March, and we really need more folks in Millbrae to be CERT trained, so hope that folks will sign up for that. I want to thanks and congratulate staff. I've been using the new website, and it's so fantastic. Getting to pages is so much faster. So I really hope that the public is now, you know, getting on the site, using it, and feeling that same benefit. You know, maybe, I know one of the features that we have with this new site is a single login to multiple components. And I don't know if maybe we could do a couple, like, webinars here and there for the public to get the word out on that and how to create their account and which items are in that, because people might now have, like, one for their park and rec and one for something else, helping people, you know, make that transition. And then we are rounding out the timeframe for the Lomita Canal clearing. So thank you to Public Works for those updates, and we'll be continuing to get those as it wraps up and sharing that with neighborhood residents who are impacted by that. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for another extension of ten more minutes. Can I have a motion and a second? If not, I'll motion it.
So moved.
Thank you. Seconded. Please call the vote. Councilmember? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll go, so, Councilman Fun, he's going off to do it. Stay talking.
Yeah, I'll be real quick. Between the Japanese festival, cultural festival, and the SOW, Foot, Want, and Hero is great. You know, we raised quite a bit of money at the SOW fundraiser, great for the kids. I'm glad we get it done, and it's getting it done in Millbrae. So I'm extremely proud of that. Just want to talk a little bit about the hard board meeting that we had. We just, the last board meeting, we have approved a 100% affordable housing unit. The hard board is going to give along at $3 million. Part of that is also Measure K loan as well. 65 unit, 100% affordable, and they range anywhere between 30% to 80% AMI, but the average is below 50% AMI. And get this, 25% of all the unit, which is 21, are set aside for formerly homeless supportive housing. So there is a model there that works. It's a vacant, you know, it's a vacant lot, they can build right on it, and that does not take away tax revenue, does not take away jobs. In fact, it created jobs. And so there are some models that we can follow throughout the county in order to be able to build these affordable housing and permanent supportive housing unit the right way. So just want to get that reported out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Vice Mayor? Okay. First, I'd like to congratulate Millbrae Community Enhancement Advisory Committee Member, Claire Beltrami. She's a retired principal from Lomita Park, and she has been appointed to fill the Millbrae Elementary School District Board of Trustees, which sadly means she had to resign from MCAC because they meet at exactly the same time. So we are now down, again, to three regular members and one alternate. That said, two of the people who interviewed for the Park and Rec Commission are interested in MCAC. The question to council is, do they need to go through the interview committee? That's David Tavacoli and I, Mr. Chen, the lovely man with the bicycle background. They are both interested in serving in MCAC, but I leave it to the two of you on that subcommittee. If you could do that, MCAC had to, couldn't make quorum on Tuesday and had to cancel. And that brings me to the very, very exciting news. Millbrae's first attempt at passing our very own legislation, SB 676, was signed by the governor on Sunday. That is the law giving local control under drought control plantings to ban artificial turf. So yay for us. Our emergency ordinance ends the end of October. There's that two-month period. But what we promised the public is that we would give them landscape guidelines, things that would encourage them to do something else other than hardscaping and putting that nasty material. That ordinance, our new ordinance should be coming to the October 24th, and I believe we will be the first in the country. So everyone is watching us. It's really exciting. It brings me back to bike pedestrian. I spoke to Mr. Chen, or emailed with him, spoke to Mr. Tavacoli. The county CCGB PAC meeting was the same as the Sheriff's Activity League, so I skipped that one, and I'm not chair, so I can do that now. But they're going to be opening, or have opened, the grant period for what's called TDA Article III. We have been absolutely unlucky. We've gotten one TDA Article III, eight years, nine, maybe my first year, or my first year, 2016. We haven't gotten a grant since. But I would love to call a meeting together so that we can try to see what's competitive. The next meeting is October 26th. But I think we, if we're going to apply, it's one of those, it takes up so much staff time, but if we don't apply, then we'll never get it. But I'm just to know that. And we really, so that's bike pedestrian. I already reported out on Airport Noise Roundtable, One Shoreline Met, they had SFO come and talk about their sea level rise. And because we are not truly represented on that JPA, I got two minutes. Basically, SFO came in and talked about how they're going to extend 20 feet off the end of runway one and not anything about the five acres of mud flats they're filling at Millbrae. So we're not getting very good representation from One Shoreline. And the final thing is, I really, I had put this on goal setting. I probably shouldn't have put it on goal setting. It didn't get the goals. But we really do need a functioning bike pedestrian committee. And I would like, if we're going to be looking at protocols for staff and council to consider the two park and rec people and maybe some public members, because we've got public members with good bike pedestrian. To me, a good bike pedestrian committee also has someone who is visually impaired, because they experience sidewalks differently than the rest of us do, and they cross the street differently on that. But we really do need a functioning bike pedestrian. When economic, social equity is created and we become the social justice community, I think we are, it'll just be another part of getting our ducks in the row to be able to be competitive in funding on that. Yes, great events everywhere. And with that, I will end. Oh, we have got a little bit of time. Vice Mayor, you sure nothing? Okay. I would like to close in memory of Senator Feinstein. Most of you probably saw everything. I actually was in Washington DC lobbying for the University of California when she was passing the assault rifle, and then got invited to her breakfast that she held there at no cost of the constituents. So she was an amazing, amazing human being that opened the door for most of us female politicians in here. So closing in memory of Senator Feinstein. And then it is sad if you have not heard Les Morse, the husband of former Mayor Doris Morse, passed away a few days ago. I attended the service today. My mom remembers him when Doris was running for office, that he would come into Mom's